Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of West Orange, regular meeting July 2nd, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Notice that this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and no new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise for the pleasure of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Can you put up the, I don't have the minutes with all the, I'm sorry, the agenda with all the new meeting minutes? I only have a draft. Could you put that up, please?
There are no minutes for today.
No, I think he means the next Planning Board Special Meeting.
The special meeting dates.
Dr. Bagel, if I have the agenda.
Okay, would you read that into the record, please?
The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held January 16th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in person. The next Planning Board Special Meeting, another special meeting will be held July 23rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM in person. The next special meeting after that will be held July 30th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in person. And the next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held August 6th, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a question.
Mayor McCartney.
Well, first I want to say to Chris Morgan, congratulations and best wishes to Chase on her way to West Point. And all of those dates that we just said, are we voting on all of those dates? Because we're really not having special meetings on all of those states. I just wanted to confirm.
We're going to see what the objectors and the applicant have to offer for us. We're trying to get this done by August, so we gave them a lot of dates. opposed to dragging this out one, one objector expert or a person at a time.
Okay, to see when they're available.
Right, so at each meeting, we will say when we're going to use the next meeting to move this expeditiously.
Okay.
We definitely will be there on July 16th. That's a gift.
Right.
Is it? Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
Did you want to do roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call. I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Ms. Alpert?
Here.
Ms. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffler?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Novarini?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Wayno?
Present.
Chairman Bagel?
Here, thank you.
Yes, for the record, Mr. Klein and Mr. Wolf won't be joining us tonight.
Thank you. Would you swear in the Township Professional, please, Ms. McGovern?
Yes, I know Mr. Hazel is here. Mr. Scott, oh, you're right next to each other on my screen here. If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. First application before us is PB 25-05, the West Orange Planning Board Block 172, Lot 29.01, Zone 29.01, 9 Manjor Road. The applicant is proposing a new paved playground, a modular building with six classrooms for pre-K for the applicant.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Brian Chukaski, Cleary Jacoby Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the West Orange Board of Education.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. We're before the board this evening, Mr. Chairman, for a review and recommendation pursuant to Section 31 of the Municipal Land Use Law. Since this is a project by a government entity, we are required to appear before the board for their review and recommendation. What is before you this evening is an addition of a modular building to the Mount Pleasant Elementary School located at 9 Manjor Road, as indicated. We submitted the application on June 11th, along with thereafter a tree removal application. You should have two sets of site plans before you, one for the modular building, one for the playground, and also the architectural plans. Simply, the proposal is for a modular building with six classrooms and a paved playground in the north area of the school behind the existing building. The use is for pre-kindergarten. We have two witnesses this evening, our civil engineer, Dennis Keenan, and our architect, Kenneth Ross. We also received reports from the Board Planner, which was dated June 23rd, and also from the Board Engineer dated June 27th. We've reviewed those reports, find them to be very well crafted, and there were some questions raised in those reports, which we certainly can answer. So unless, Mr. Chairman, if there is, if there aren't any questions of me, I would call my first witness, Kenneth Ross, the architect, to describe what is being proposed on behalf of the Board of Ed.
Go right ahead, Mr. Chukaski.
All right, if I can have Mr. Ross sworn, please.
Mr. Ross, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ross, could you give the board the benefit of your professional education and experience?
I have a Bachelor's in Architecture at NJIT in Newark. I've been working in with the Caribbean Architects for the last 10 years, and I've been an architect for almost 30 years. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey for about 20 years now.
All right, and your license is still in good standing, correct?
Yes, it is.
Correct. And primarily, are you involved with the design of government buildings and in particular, schools?
Yes.
All right, so you're familiar with the process with the Department of Education and what's being proposed?
Very familiar.
What were you requested to do on behalf of the Board of Education?
They were looking to provide a modular unit to house the six classrooms for pre-K classrooms on the property. So we worked with this mobile lease to put together plans for that use on location.
Okay.
One second. Councilwoman Scarpa is recusing herself from this application. Councilwoman, I know you're on mute, but if you could just also take yourself off video for this, for this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGovern. Mr. Ross, my understanding is that this building is going to be used for the pre-kindergarten, correct?
Correct.
And that'll be self-contained? There are sufficient classrooms, restrooms, and the like to support the use for the pre-kindergarten facility?
Yeah, each classroom will have its own toilet room as is prescribed in the state code.
Okay. In addition, it's my understanding that there is a playground area that was designed in close proximity to the building. Am I correct?
Yes, I believe at the back of the building, there's an area that's going to be designated as playground for the preschool.
All right, so basically, this, this is a self-contained building for pre-kindergarten, along with the outdoor recreation area, which is designed to accommodate those students?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you want to add to your testimony?
Um, I mean, it'll have a nurse office in the building, so they'll be able to handle that themselves. It also has a couple of private offices to, you know, provide security and support for the teachers. It has two exits from the building as required by code. Pretty much it. It'll be a barrier-free access.
Now, it's my understanding that the Board Engineer raised the question. Well, I guess I should ask you. Have you reviewed the Board Engineer's report dated June 27th?
Yes.
Okay. In that report, there is one question that I believe is that perhaps you could answer about site lighting or building lighting. Will there be any lighting proposed?
We typically put lighting on the building. So we provide lighting.
All right, so although it may not be depicted on the plan, there will be actually, you know, what I would call the, the site lighting on the side of the building.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Now, I don't know if you had the opportunity, but did you get the chance to read the Borough Planner's Report?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and I know that one of the questions was is that whether there was an elevation view of the building. I don't know if you were able to prepare an elevation, or if you weren't, if you could describe it?
Uh, no, I do have a rendering that we used for another project, which I could show, which would show the general idea of what we'd be doing.
Okay, perhaps if we could have that marked as a one and provide Mr. Ross with the ability to share his screen, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. McGovern, were the, these two reports posted on the website?
I'm dealing with another, I guess Jamalat would know what's posted. Wait, I have the agenda here in my hand.
They were listed on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Planner Report and the Engineering Review were attached. I just have, I, I just have to, there may be another board member who has to recuse themselves. If I could just.
Yeah, go ahead.
A moment.
I can't get the. It's.
Okay, we're good. Just checked out something. We're okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Ken, do you have the ability to share your screen yet?
I'm looking for the button for it.
It should be on the bottom.
On the bottom if you cursor around.
There it is, got it. Okay, can you see my screen right now?
We can see there's nothing on it. It's.
So this isn't exactly what it would look like, but this is something similar to what we would have. The front entrance will have a barrier-free ramp on the right-hand side here, behind this gentleman with the little boy, providing access to the building, and the roof over top would extend the entire length of that ramp to provide coverage for the entire ramp. We'd have a similar cover on the back end at the other exit, which would be much smaller because it would just, you know, it's just a smaller stair and landing at the back. But this is generally what you'd be looking at.
And since you indicated the ramp, the entire building will be accessible. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Once you're up that ramp and into the building, everything should be barrier-free.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for Mr. Ross.
Okay, will there be bathrooms in the building?
Yes, there's bathrooms in each of the classrooms, and then there's also a bathroom in the nurse's office and a staff bathroom in the hallway by the offices.
And all bathrooms will be unisex?
Yes.
Okay, and all bathrooms, I would imagine, are ADA compliant?
Yes.
Okay. Emergency lighting, the, well, the fire code, subcode official has looked at the plans. Yes?
I can't answer that question, but we typically provide all of the requirements of the local code for fire protection and.
Okay, so it will, it will apply to all state standards for fire and emergency access?
Yes, it should.
Okay. Let's see, we'll go around the board. We'll follow in this cap for her. Do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
No questions at this time.
Captain Norberini, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
Um, per the question in the Planner's Report, I was curious if there was going to be any landscaping added to the playground or the building area.
We can have Mr. Keenan ask, answer that question, but if recommendation of the board will certainly add the landscaping.
We'd certainly love to see some, and, you know, given the, you know, addition of a new paved area, you know, possibly something else that can capture water, you know, rain gardens, et cetera, et cetera, something to think about.
Okay. Councilperson, I'm sorry, never mind. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
Thank you, Chairman. So, of course, my first question was about ADA compliance, so I appreciate that. But I also do know about, I don't know if we're going to get further into this about the classroom spot size, about being 900 square feet per classroom. Are you going to get into any of the details about the classrooms that, the six classrooms that will be provided within the building?
Um, yes, the, let me pull my drawing back up.
It's 950 square feet per classroom.
Is that the code, or is that the size you're saying that we've said it was on?
That's, that's the code required by the Department of Education.
Yeah, these are, that's for 15 students, I believe.
That is the limit, 15 students per classroom?
It's, it's per the square foot. We're showing 950 square foot per classroom.
Right. That's what I was asking about confirming that.
The code, I believe, is 900 square foot for, for 15 occupants, and we're showing 13 per classroom.
So.
We will have, we'll have less students than.
As a planning board, like, how do we determine that? Because that's Board of Education, and the grant funding applies to 15 students per classroom?
It has been submitted to the state of New Jersey for review, and that is one of the things that they review as part of that. So we will have to get approval from them for the plans that we submitted, so they will review that and confirm that.
Okay, so it sounds like they are reducing the number of students to accommodate the structure?
That I wouldn't be able to comment on. That would be a matter of how many they think that they need to put in each classroom, so.
Okay, how, how do we determine that?
Uh, could you rephrase that question, please?
I'm just, how do, how do we determine that? I mean, is that what you're suggesting, that they are, they're, they're asking for 13 students?
That's what we're getting, that's what we're getting approved from the state of New Jersey for.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So if, if I may, Mayor, the, the size of the classroom is going to be based upon the occupancy pursuant to the code requirements. In this instance, we are proposing 13 students per classroom. In the occupancy and the design, will have to be approved by the Department of Education, who reviews all these drawings.
Okay, Count, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Mr., thank you for your presentation. Quick question. Is this a permanent building, or is this for temporary use?
I believe it's to be used for an indefinite length of time.
So, but it's, it's a temporary building and not a permanent structure?
Well, these are modular units, and they are frequently used for a more permanent use and installation. These will be anchored to the ground. They will have foundations and beyond peers. So it's not like, you know, it's a more permanent structure.
Okay, so are these like trailers?
They're modular units that they put together to form these, these buildings.
Okay. And, okay, and if I may ask it this time, Mr. Chairman, when, when, when do they intend to have this building completed?
Oh. I, I don't know. Do you mean, how long is it going to take to build it?
Well, when do, put it into use and service?
Oh, like, will it be ready for September? Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Okay.
I would imagine with the number of children that are on the waitlist for this pre-K expansion program, they would want it done by September.
Okay.
Okay, any other thing else, Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
Yes, please. Just one clarification. One, the questions I asked in my report was about the covering for the proposed playground. Is that, it seems as though that's going to be hard surface concrete. It's not going to be one of these rubberized membranes?
Hmm, no.
Again, that would be a better question.
Mr. Keenan can answer that.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait till then. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony?
Uh, no questions for Mr. Ross at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Ross on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Ross? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My next witness is Dennis Keenan, our civil engineer.
Mr. Keenan, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You?
All right, Mr. Keenan, if you could provide the board with the benefit of your education and experience, please.
Or I have a Bachelor's in Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Maryland. My license is in good standing. I've appeared before numerous boards as an expert in the area of civil engineering throughout the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've prepared a couple hundred plans similar to the, the one that is before you tonight with respect to civil engineering.
All right, thank you, Mr. Keenan. You're familiar with the site plans that were submitted with respect to both the modular building and the playground. Is that correct? All right, if you could describe briefly for the board what's being proposed, let's start with the building and what improvements are going to be done, and perhaps tell us what's there now.
Sure. If I could, I could walk you through the plans, and if it's all right, can I put an aerial exhibit, or really just the internet up?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll mark that as A2, please.
And Mr. Keenan, you'll have to describe exactly what the aerial exhibit shows, please.
Well, can we freeze frame it and get a copy to our Board Secretary, so we just have a record of it after the hearing?
I can do that. Yes. All right, can you see my screen now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so this is an aerial image of the subject property, Mount Pleasant School. I'm sure you're all very familiar with it. This website is near map, which has image from March 19th, 2025. So you can see the whole property. You can see the school up at, it kind of, on the lower portion of the property, up by Manjor Road. Ellison Ave is off to the left, and at the top of the school, or kind of the north side, is what is an existing open field, and there is a small asphalt playground area off to the side. Adjacent to that is a, an existing playground area that's mulch with some exercise equipment off in the grass. So this is kind of an existing recreational area that's used as athletic fields. There's a driveway connecting this asphalt area to Ellison Ave. That's kind of an existing service road that provides connectivity and allows them to maintain this portion of the property. So what's proposed is what Mr. Ross had described to you as a modular building. The modular building is going to be constructed in what essentially looks like the outfield of this baseball field, the recreational field. And then there is going to be a parking area that's constructed in what is the existing asphalt play area and using the existing drive aisle that will be widened a little bit. So I'll jump over to, this is sheet C3 of the submitted site plan set for the proposed modular building. And I just want to clarify, we did submit two sets of plans, ones for the modular building, ones for the playground. That wasn't to confuse everybody. The reason is we're setting, bidding them out as two separate projects to two separate contractors. So we had to generate two sets of plans. But essentially, these are kind of all going at the same time. So this is, the existing school is off on the bottom of the sheet. Up here is the existing ball field that shows the proposed one-story modular building. And the asphalt area where you're seeing the proposed parking is the existing asphalt area that is really the playground, and there's a, the connector road that really, we're following the same connector road, providing it a little bit wider, because we are going to have, we're going to, we're going to have more vehicles using it. So we've widened it out to 20 feet and provided, I think it's 11 parking stalls with one ADA within the footprint of the existing asphalt area. So that is connected by sidewalk to the proposed building. There is, as was indicated, there is an ADA ramp, so from the hatch area off of the ADA parking stall, someone could go in and access the main entrance of the school, or they would have access through the ramp system to get up to the main entrance of the school. Additionally, there's a rear exit door at the back, and there's a sidewalk just providing connection to the back. It's not really the main entrance point, but it's, it's more of a bioregress, an emergency exit. You'll notice up above that, again, within the ball field, is this existing underground stormwater management basin. We are adding new impervious surfaces. We are triggering major development from a stormwater management standpoint. So we are providing stormwater detention in this area underground, and then that's going to discharge out the back. The existing playground area is right here. That's the mulch area. That's going to remain. And then that, that's really the scope of the proposed building, but I just want to touch on the proposed playground. I'll show you those plans, but that, that playground that is going to be added is right over here. And what I'll do is I'll jump to the plans that were, this is again, the same plans that were submitted as part of the application package. This is site, sheet C1, civil site plan for the Mount Pleasant Elementary School and the new paved playground. This, you can see, kind of screened out, is what is proposed as, you know, as far as the building is concerned, and all those features which will be built by the modular building contractor. And then there's the playground here that is essentially going to be taking the playground that we had in this area and relocating it into this location up next to the school. It is a sloped area, so there is wall, a retaining wall constructed around it. But essentially, that's all it is. It's, I think there was questions about the surfaces. It's an asphalt surface matching what's out there now. These are basketball courts, a funnelball area, four-square. And it's all going to be fenced in with some mangates here and some access for vehicles and such. We're also upgrading. There's an existing sidewalk here that's getting upgraded along with that. So we are providing.
Before you leave that plan, Mr. Keenan.
Yep.
Uh, students that are in the modular building and they're going to traverse to the playground, is there adequate striping and the like to assure that they could safely cross to the playground area?
Yes, so we have provided, you can see it here, there's striping to allow the children to cross this street and then come into the playground area. And I don't want, sorry, I'm saying street, but it's not really a street. I mean, it, it, it is something that during the day, there really shouldn't be any traffic coming up.
You, you anticipated my next question. That's basically for pickup and drop-off, so during school hours, you do not expect any vehicular traffic to be going into, onto this driveway?
Correct.
It's, in addition, I believe, the engineer asked about the, the paved surface. the engineer asked about the, the paved surface and also, uh, that there be some coordination with the police department. Is there any objection to doing that?
No, not at all.
Okay. And there was a question raised by the board planner, and I believe one of the board members, uh, could additional landscaping be added to the site?
It certainly could. Um, and I think that there's something, I mean, I, obviously, I can't agree to that. Maybe the, uh, uh, attorney can, um, but I would bring back to the schools. That's something that's requested.
Certainly, as I said, we're here for a review and recommendation. If that's a recommendation to the board, that certainly will be shared with them. Uh, all right, please continue, Mr. Keenan. I, I interrupted you.
No, no problem. Um, e- essentially, that's the scope of the project. Um, I'm happy to go into any details on any particular items that there are any questions on.
All right. So going back to the engineer's letter, he raised a question about the, the drainage. You're in agreement that stormwater uh, will be considered major in this instance, and you'll comply with the appropriate regulations and ordinances?
Correct. And just for clarity, and it wasn't probably fully clear when he was looking at it either, is that, um, the stormwater management that's incorporated into phase one being the building anticipates the playground and, uh, controls the runoff for that as well.
And, uh, in addition, I believe the board planner, I should ask this. Uh, there was, uh, soil conservation district approval will be required for this. Has that been obtained?
Yes, we've obtained approval for both projects.
Okay. And then the, uh, last question that I had was with respect to, uh, wetlands. Uh, the board planner indicated that there may be certain designated wetlands that may affect the site. Uh, any of the constructions or improvements that are being proposed, is that going to impact any of the existing wetlands?
No, it's not. We went and had one of our professionals go take a look at where wetlands were to make sure we were not impacting them, and we ensured that all improvements were maintained outside of any buffer areas.
Right. Ms. Chairman, I have no further questions for Mr. Keenan.
Okay. Uh, I've got a question. Is this for the children? Is it going to be for the preschool, the elementary, or both? This playground?
I believe it's going to be for both.
Okay, you believe? So how can we get an absolute? And who's going to be watching the kids out there?
Well, Ms. Chairman, the, any of the younger children are going to be accompanied by an aide or a teacher when they use this. The playground was primarily designed to accommodate the pre-kindergarten. However, there's nothing to preclude other students from using that prep playground.
Okay. Is there a road where they have to cross where there's traffic?
Uh, the answer is no. Mr. Keenan could certainly show that.
Yes.
On the plan.
Okay.
Maybe aerial will help that, Mr. Keenan.
And is there going to be fencing around this to keep the kids out of or in the area specifically?
Yes, there is fencing around the entire playground area. So there's an eight-foot-high fence around these edges and then four foot on the high side. Because there's a retaining wall there. But I can show you if we go back to the aerial we're looking at before, um, the playground essentially will be back in this area. And then any, anybody coming from the school, they'd be able to use the sidewalk. There's a sidewalk over here. They wouldn't even have to cross this drive aisle to access it, you know? So there's a number of different access points to get to the proposed playground.
Are there going to be any structures there? Or the kids just play ball? Or do they have sliding ponds or other things that will be there?
It will be basketball nets, um, funnelball, and, uh, there's, there's some striping games that they could play, like four-square.
Okay. Is there going to be any cameras out there to watch what's going on at all times?
I am not aware of that. I mean, it's not built into here, but I, I'm, if they have cameras out there back in this area, I'm sure it would pick this up, um, but whether that's being added or not, I don't know.
Okay, I would, because that's away from away from away. And I'm always concerned about children at that age. They may, it may be a, a condition that the, the board asks for to have some type of video camera out there that, uh, can pan the entire area to ensure somebody on the inside takes a look at the end of the day to make sure there's no children left. For safety. I'm just throwing that out there. Okay, um, we'll go with Ms. Capra again. Do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan about his testimony?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I do. Um, and thanks, uh, Mr. Keenan for your, your testimony. Uh, I was also wondering about the wetlands. Um, did you obtain a letter of interpretation for that?
No, we did not.
Um, so the, the DEP hasn't, hasn't taken a look then at the, the delineation? Okay.
It's not, it's not a requirement that they have to.
Okay.
You know, it's, it, that, that's really on the applicant to make that decision whether they're choose to.
Per- perhaps, Mr. Keenan, if you could help this caper out, is that there was a visual observation which would indicate that where, if there are existing wetlands, they are not being implicated by the construction on our, in this location?
Yes, and they, well, we sent, like, again, I, I said, uh, we sent our wetlands professionals out there to go take a look at them, flag them, pick them up by the surveyor, our surveyor. Um, and, y- you know, they're deeper in the woods, so there's a separation of woods between any wetlands and any of our activities. And, you know, we, we also made sure we didn't want to go in and take down any woods. Let's keep our work within the area that's currently disturbed. So, I mean, a- anything we're doing is really within a disturbed area
Mm-hmm.
and, and maintained out of any native buffers.
Okay. Yeah, the reason I was asking, I was looking on the, the DEP, like the GeoWeb, and it, the way, the way that it looks on there, it looks like the, the wetlands are kind of in the area where, you know, you're hoping to put the, the modular building. So I, yeah, I just wanted to check on that.
Yeah, which is an, an actively disturbed area, and we see that. It, it's funny, on a lot of athletic fields, for some reason, they, they'll pop up on there and, and they never are wet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Just wanted to check. Um, uh, regarding the underground detention, was there, uh, any consideration of, uh, providing infiltration there? Was there any, like soils testing or anything uh, to see if, if, uh, green infrastructure could be provided?
That, uh, we have infiltration. We did do testing, soils testing, verified the soil permeability. Uh, made sure we had, uh, adequate depth to groundwater table, uh, and of course with stormwater regulations.
Okay, so you are meeting that requirement then? O- okay. Um, regarding the, the parking count, um, how did you determine how many spaces that you would use?
We basically got as much as in as we could. We, we didn't, we didn't want to expand the area. We, we didn't want to make a, a big parking area. We wanted to provide some level of parking up along the building. Um, but not create a parking lot up there.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, I guess related to that. I mean, is it, is it, um, thought that it would mostly be like a, like a kiss and go, like a drop-off? Is that the intent? Like when parents are, you know, dropping kids, picking them up?
Yes, that's how I understand it.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then another question sort of related to, to access and parking. Um, the, the access drive itself, uh, is there like a turning radius? Like, is it, it's, um, you know, maybe a bit more narrow than we would typically see, which is, you know, I'm, I'm always for like, let's use less pavement, but, you know, one, just wanting to make sure the cars can get in and out.
Right. Yeah, and, and we looked at that. I mean, it's, it's a narrow drive going up there, and I, I I'll, I'll say I echo your concern as to just making sure we're providing adequate space. And, you know, twenty foot is something that is, you know, I think in some instances, if you want to look at like an RS, uh, standard, like an RSIS standard for an alley or a road where you have two-way traffic, you could go down to eighteen. I think that was too narrow. Um, you know, it, twenty, typical drive aisles ideally would be at twenty-four feet. But ultimately, we don't have anybody parking on either side. So I, I think if the, the net, more narrow we can keep it, the better. Twenty feet was what was comfortable for two passing vehicles, considering, you know, no one's going twenty-five miles an hour down here. This isn't even, uh, it's a, it's a driveway with no means of parking off it. So, uh, that was really what we were kind of comfortable with. And any, any addition, you know, to go where we kind of wanted to go was twenty-four. You know, then we started going in the woods and we started, you know, we're taking down a lot of trees and, um, it just had a lot of repercussions that we didn't want to see happen.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I mean, uh, yeah, I, I can definitely understand that. But even, you know, when cars, I'm, I'm just envisioning, I'm, I'm thinking about, um, pickup and drop-off when my kids were in, in elementary school and just know how, uh, unfortunately, how, uh, 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 sometimes drivers are not being very careful. We'll just put it, put it that way. Um, just thinking about drivers coming in and out of, of the, um, of that access drive and, you know, people making turns maybe quickly in and out and just it not being very wide, just wanting to make sure that they can make the turn there. Um, you know, without, if someone's coming out at the same time that someone's driving in, uh, or like turning in, making sure they can, can make that turn.
Right. Yeah, and, and there's, you know, it, it is going to have to be a little bit of a staging and, and there's going to have to be some level, since it's kind of happening at one time, there
Yeah.
this, this school's going to have to maintain it and just make sure there's traffic control to make sure that everything's handled appropriately on those crates, i- if that, if that's what ends up happening.
Yeah, I mean, it should, it would serve to slow traffic. I just wonder, you know, if it's, um, it'll, yeah, if people be able to get in and out, uh, adequately. Um, and then, uh, the, the new sidewalk that you're providing kind of from that driveway up to the existing school, is that ADA compliant? It looks like it, the slope looks, uh, a bit severe there. Just curious about that.
That one, I, no, I don't believe that is ADA compliant.
Um, I know, looks like it would be a challenge to make it ADA compliant there, but I'm wondering if it, it might, uh, maybe should be.
Yeah, it, it would be a pretty significant. Let me just look at the slope. Um, it, it would be a pretty massive tearing out of the hillside and switchbacks, and it would, it would take up the whole area.
Yeah, I mean, is there?
Is there an alternate route?
Yeah.
Yes, on the, on the, on the right side of the school. And essentially, if I'm calling that the left side, it would be the opposite side of the school will be the alternate route.
And that one, that one's compliant?
Um, I don't want to say, I, I, just because I haven't checked it, I don't want to say it necessarily is, but it's certainly flatter.
Yeah, I mean, that might be something that.
That, that looks close to compliant.
And.
I'm not, I'm not going to say it is, but it's close.
Is that a recommendation that, that, uh, if I could have a description of southeast, you know, would, the direction of that sidewalk?
Well, would, would this, would this change the project so drastically that it would not be available to be used in September?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this could be incorporated by September. I, I, I don't, I don't know how feasible it is to, to do it at this point. I haven't really evaluated that quite honestly.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, that's something we can take a look at if that's a recommendation.
Yeah, I would make that a recommendation because you want to have this ADA compliant.
All right. So I need a description, though. It's ADA, uh, review.
I think it could just, just be generally, from my opinion, what I, from what I'm hearing, I think it's general, generally to provide, ensure there's ADA compliance between the main building and the proposed play area.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That's, that's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. Do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Keenan. Uh, um, could you pull up the, the visual again?
Which one? The aerial or the plan?
Uh, plan.
Sure. Sheet?
Yes, thank you. So starting on the Ellison Avenue, the, the new entrance that you, so you're creating wider drive aisle, what is, what does that entrance look like? Is there anything?
The existing entrance?
Yeah, currently the existing entrance is gated, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you'd be removing the gate and, you know, just widening the drive. Uh, that's pretty much it here. Nothing, nothing else going on, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, looking at the building, I'm trying to just superimpose. I'm trying to understand. The building is where the current baseball diamond is?
Um, if we look at this plan, I would say that, the, the, that's the backstop right here.
That's the backstop.
Yeah, so if you're, if we're looking at the baseball, the, the infield.
Yeah.
You're probably talking about right there.
Okay.
That's, that's the playing field. And then the, the fence line is, and I'm just marking up in red on the plan. That's, that, this is the, uh, existing outfield fence line on the highway.
Okay. Thank you. And then the, the, uh, not parking lot, but the little, the, the turn that we have, like, you know, tiny parking lot here. That, where, where does that fall? Does that fall in the smack dab in the middle of the current blacktop?
That, yes, that follows the current blacktop.
Okay. So the like, I, I heard you say earlier that the, um, playground, the proposed playground is intended for, or maybe that was, that was, um, not you, this lawyer, intended for the pre-K students or the kindergarten students, excuse me. And if that's the case, it, there, apparently, there's nothing, um, saying that the elementary school students couldn't use that, that playground. But if that's the case, uh, I'm just thinking back to when I attended the school, uh, everything was done on the blacktop. Um, sometimes you could use the field in recess. I guess, I'm wondering, these students, the elementary school students, it looks like they would not necessarily have access to the field, or would they be walked across to the field by, by teachers, or would they conduct recess in the, um, other blacktop, you know, the main school entrance? Um, what happens to those?
Well, I think they, yeah, they would, and this doesn't show the, um, but the playground area that's being proposed is somewhere around here, right? I'm highlighting this sheet where you don't see it, but that, that's the playground area. So I think a lot of the activity which currently resides in the existing playground that's now as vehicles is going to be relocated to that asphalt area. And then the, whether they're going to use the remaining grass areas within the ball field for activities, um, I, I, I can't say for certain, but I imagine they probably would to some degree.
Okay. Well, I guess what, what I'm getting at is that it seems like, and I could be wrong, there could have been changes to the school, you know, over the course of the past two decades, but, um, the blacktop was just a large expansive area for students to play on. Oftentimes, there would be combined recesses, you know, and I'm wondering, I don't know the current practice, maybe recesses are staggered. It seemed like, it seems like we're losing a lot of space for the elementary school students, especially if the new playground is kind of demarcated and what you can do unless it's totally open and you're just saying it stripes as far as the, the different, um, sports or activities you can do on it. I'm, I'm, and, and also just adding that, you know, what I heard was that the kindergarten students are primarily supposed to use this playground. So I'm wondering, you know, large amount of elementary school students, less space.
Yeah, I guess, well, to a- answer that question, I, I think what is happening is comparable to what's there. This is pretty much the playground area that exists to that.
I think the playground area is a little more amorphous in my mind.
Yeah, you're right. Actually, you're, you are right. It, it, it it jumps out in this corner up here. It goes in, in a reg- in a regular shape up here.
Okay.
So it is going to be a little more consistent. It, it's going to be consistent with what was the main area, taking off this little knob up at the top. But, you know, it's not, it's similar in size. But I, I, I expect, yes, though, that this playground is to replace what they're losing by removing that.
Okay. So in that case, more, more likely than not, the elementary school students, all, all of the students are intended to use this new playground.
I believe so. Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, um, let me just make sure I have all my notes here. So. Okay, where, where are the, um, you said there were a couple entrances to the playground. I'm seeing one.
There are two entrances.
Oh, two. Okay.
There's, there's one entrance for the children, and then there's essentially a service entrance that's got a wider gate.
Okay. Um, no, I guess those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan on his testimony?
No questions at this time, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Captain Oberini, do you have any questions for Mrs. Keenan on his testimony?
I just have one question regarding the main, uh, access drive. I noticed that there's a gate there and a, an existing gate, but we're replacing it. Is there a reason, considering that's going to be a, um, a lot busier in terms of, uh, drop-off? In terms of uh drop off and pickups, is there a reason the gate's being replaced?
Um, well, I, I I can't give you the specific reason, that was a request of the, of the school district, I assume they just wanted to be, the, the ability to shut it down. Uh, and shut it, any traffic down from coming back into this area at any given point, and it may even be during the school day, but I I don't know that for certain. How they can operate it.
Okay, and then one more question, uh, I know we had the loop there and I'm just trying to ensure that I, I'm, I'm seeing appropriately, is that gonna be an island, or is that gonna be? Uh, just, just lane marking? Is that gonna be a completely open uh lot?
It'll be open. It's, there's, there's no island, it's just asphalt.
Okay.
It's just trying to kind of give everybody the idea of how to circulate.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alper, do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony?
I do, thank you. Um, it, it looks like we're, so we're replacing the mulch playground with the building. And then replacing, I think, grass with the paved playground. Um, what's the increase in the impermeable surface?
Oh, the total increase. Yes, I have that number, I just don't have it immediately off the.
My, my concern, not so much the exact number, but that, you know, it definitely, you know, reinforces for me that I would like to see some landscaping and, you know, hopefully a rain garden. Something that really mitigates the added impervious coverage there.
Okay.
Um, it looks like on, from one of the photos in the planner's report, it looks like one of the uh playground structures in the playground that's being removed. Looks like it's a play structure or a slide of some sort, and it doesn't look like on the plans that we're replacing the slide. So, just from a, I'm just thinking from a, you know, a mixed-use K to five playground that now has to accommodate pre-K to five. But it looks like we're losing, you know, not to get too in the weeds, but we're losing a bigger slide structure that might be something that I would assume the bigger kids use.
Right, let me, let me, and I, I think maybe there's a little confusion on what we're losing, um, and I didn't make very clear, so let me, let me improve on that. Um, so this is, this is going back to the play area, so that, that's the, this is the play area that's getting constructed, that's offsetting here. The area that is staying is this playground area.
Okay, that's not being removed.
That's not being removed. There is like a, there's like some exercise equipment back behind the play area. That is, and I'll show you on the aerial, um, so this is the play area with the playground equipment, that's all staying.
Great, and that's the slide in the background that I was thinking about, so that's.
Correct, yeah, 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 yeah. So that, there's some equipment back here, uh, you know, which is really more of the exercise equipment.
I know what you mean, yeah.
That's, that is coming out.
Okay.
We'll maintain that, which is the key feature.
And I guess there's no possible way to replace the baseball field.
No, unfortunately.
My only other thing, and I don't wanna discuss it in public, obviously, but that, the, the security plan, and I, I do think that it needs to be a condition that the police department. Has been consulted about both building hardening and emergency management, uh, including cameras being added to the existing systems. And, you know, that that just needs to be something that we know has been handled, just like, you know, when we do cannabis, we need to know that there's a security plan. That the police chief has signed off on, but we don't know exactly what the security plan is, because obviously we wouldn't discuss that in public.
Directly. Yes.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony?
I do, Chairman, thank you. And it's a first thank you to you for asking about the fencing, because of course that would be a requirement. Um, my second question is in reference to. Board member, uh, Lori Caffrey, asking about the wetlands, that was something I was wondering if that aerial view would be able to show. Uh, the delineation, because I know that there are grading issues up there. Doesn't seem like it's going to affect this, but. It leads into my next question about, can we confirm that this is board of education property? And not municipally owned playground area. Uh, that would have an effect on recreation and mountaintop league and other organizations in town.
So, they'd have, they have to provide a site plan.
But I wanna just confirm, this is board of education.
Sure, where everything's clearly delineated.
That was the question, that this is board of education property and not municipal owned property.
If, if I may, the site plan that has been provided indicates that all the property. That is within the block and lot is board of education property.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, my other question is about the playground itself. I, I'm just, I'm trying to confirm or clarify that we have an award-winning. Inclusive playground, is that the one that you're trying to relocate?
No, no, yeah, and I'm not familiar with the exact equipment that is in the playground that's. Being maintained, whether that's inclusive or not, but the, the main large typical playground with slides and such is main. We're not doing anything with that, that's staying as is. What's being relocated is the equipment behind it, which is more exercise equipment. Which would not be ADA compliant.
Okay, and we did determine that we are going to have a condition that this would have to be ADA compliant. Using whatever other means of ingress or regress that we have. Chairman, I guess that was for you.
Yes, I, I agree.
All right, and that means of access, access from Ellison, will emergency vehicles be able to get that way?
Yes, it'll be twenty foot wide, it's adequate.
Okay. Uh, and I guess talking about the parking, I do know that preschools and daycares are inherently bene- beneficial. But there will be, there is a necessity for staff parking. I don't know that that was addressed. We talked about, we talked about parent drop off. Which works, but about staff parking, is there adequate parking for additional staff?
So, that, what's proposed here is, uh, we're looking at eleven additional parking stalls. Which is going to handle, I think, a good portion. I, I can't say, I mean, I don't know the exact staff count that's being added. Based upon the school, off the top of my head, um. Whether that's gonna fully address that. So, I can't, I can't testify at this point.
So, how, how do we know that parking is sufficient if we don't know how many staffs gonna be in the building?
Well, Mr. Ross indicated in his testimony, there are six classrooms, a nurse. So, if there are six classrooms and a nurse, there will be at least seven people there. If there are aides, there may be some aides, but.
Yeah, so there would have to be, there is, there is a teacher and an aide in each classroom.
And, you know, the parking in this area was intended to be maximized, and again, this has to be approved. By the state board of education to assure that we meet the standards.
Well, well, that's good, but the planning board also has a finger in this, and we wanna make sure that we're on the right track. So, if more parking is needed, more parking is needed. If it's not, then it's okay, but thi- this is not a rubber stamp, sir.
Um, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
Yeah, the information should be provided, okay? So, a- 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 as part of the finished product, we, we should have. Uh, information, we'll make it a condition that the number of staff and teachers and any other ancillary staff. Be provided to the township to ensure that the number of parking spaces are adequate. Mayor, do you have any other questions?
Well, just about, is there a way to delineate or to show where the wetlands are on this property by that aerial view?
Um, sure, I, I actually, we have it on our plan, so I can show it right on the plan.
I, the, our planner makes a reference to this from something.
I, I think he was looking at our plan.
Okay.
So, and, and you, well, you, you can see it back here. This is, that's the wood line there, this is the wetlands, and then this dash line is the buffer.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, uh, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony?
Yes, I do. I have one question, I, maybe I may have missed it, and maybe Captain Mordin could answer this. Was there any mention about what type of fire suppression will be built into the structure?
I can't answer that question, um. I don't know if Ken, you're aware.
As far as I know, that it won't be sprinkled, we'll have uh fire detection only.
Okay, so it'll be sprinkler, will also be, you know, fire detection alarms tied into the main building into the township fire department?
Uh, it will not be sprinkled. Um, but I, I believe the alarm system would uh typically be tied in, uh, we can check on that, though.
Okay, that'd be very important, so, be very interested in that. Um, that's for me, it's all for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony?
Yes, just by way of clarification, um, I was, I was very interested in the uh playground situation. Because it wasn't clear to me as to who was using what. Um, I, I don't know why I thought that the uh playground with the apparatus. And so, that is, I guess, mulch or some sort of a protective covering to the uh west of the, of the, of the, of the building. Is, I, I wasn't sure if that was going to be removed or not, but now that I do understand that it's going to remain. It will be available to the uh, uh, the, the, the pre-K kids. Cause I'm just remembering, it's been a while since I had to think back that far, but I'm just thinking that that to me would be the playground that I would have expected. The pre-K kids would be using more.
Uh, yeah, how they're gonna operate, who's gonna use what equipment, I can't, I don't see why they wouldn't. It's right there, it's right in front, I'm assuming that's appropriate equipment for the pre-K kids, I don't know why they wouldn't use it. It's, it's a, it's a great amenity to have, especially right next to the building.
Understandable, but my only concern is why I was confused about what its purpose was going to be, the one that's going to remain. The, the, the one with the covering, etc., is that there seems to be no real relationship between what you're proposing to add. And that specific area. I don't see any uh walkways going to any access points. I'm looking at it now and I couldn't tell you where you would get into that uh fenced in area. So, if it's something that's gonna be accessible to the students in this new uh facility. Uh, there is no connectivity shown on the plans, and I was just curious about how is that gonna work?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll show you, and I, and I, I, I see what you're saying, it's not apparent. Um. And maybe the better one to show you on is the playground plan, I'll, I'll take a look at that. So, the connection will be, there's that crosswalk here and, and the sidewalk going around that area. Uh, of parking in front of the proposed building. This is the existing playground area that we see, that's the mulched area. With the large playground equipment and the gate to get in there is sitting right about here. So, you know, you, a- anybody who's using it would walk across the sidewalk and come in the gate right there.
Okay, well, that, that, that's a very important thing, I think, to include in the maps, on the uh plans, because um, other than that, it is very. It, it, there's no connectivity, so that, that's something that I recommend you and men, plans to show. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Keenan on his testimony?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, thank you for Mr. Keenan, for your testimony, it was uh very good. A lot of good questions from the board, so my questions are very uh minimal. Um, one of the, uh, Mr. Keenan, did you see, uh, did you have a chance to read my report?
Yes, I did.
So, uh, one thing that was mentioned was the, uh, I guess the intersection with, uh, uh, I believe it's Ellison Road. Uh, you know, where we're expanding that driveway a little bit. So, one, one concern we have is that since the expansion of the driveway is gonna kind of like maybe interfere a little bit with the uh crosswalk. So, we just would like to, you know, possibly see if we can maybe shift that crosswalk down a little bit. Um, you know, cause the apron that they're gonna build is gonna, I, I believe is gonna kind of, when the car is right into the, to the crosswalk, so. If you can look at that a little bit more closely, and some things, uh, you know, that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I, that, that would be great if we could work with the township, um, on, because it is, it's challenging, right? It, it's a good point, and, you know, and it, it, it was a good thing to bring up. We have some challenges of shifting the crosswalk up, because we got a fire hydrant there. And then, um. You know, we had, and we can't, obviously can't swing it the other way, so it, I, I think it, it might be something that, um, it's a good recommendation. And, and we probably need to look at with the, the township engineer.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ms. McGovern, you'll make that a condition?
Yes, we'll work, well, I guess it's going to be the recommendation, we'll work with the township to ship the crosswalk on Ellison, is that the way it would be?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, to me, well, sorry, I'm interrupting, it's your condition, but I, I was just looking at it and saying, you know, I think we, it would best if we could. Take a look at it collectively and find out the best solution, and whether that's, then maybe what we're doing or maybe shifting it.
Okay, so you'll work with the township engineer then?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, Mayor McCartney wants to say something?
Oh, Mary, yeah. It would be another condition, thank you, because there are AST, ASTM standards for ADA compliance. Surface structures and safety standards. So, I would like to recommend that we make that a condition that they comply with the ASTM playground. Safety standards for ages two through twelve.
Okay, um, my next uh comment was about the uh site lighting. So, your plan does not propose any lighting or does, I don't see any lighting. Uh, the architect did um testify that they would potentially put some lighting on the building. Um, I just wanna confirm that, you know, that whatever lighting that's gonna be there will be adequate for the parking lot. Uh, I'm concerned that any lighting on the building may not be adequate. Now, I, you know, we know that this is for, you know, like a pre-K or kindergarten, we don't anticipate a lot of activity at nighttime. But if there's ever like some type of a back to school night or something like that, we wanna make sure that it's uh, you know, adequately lit. Uh, not, not just, not really for the playground area, but for the, you know, the drive aisle and the parking lot. And I believe there is um like a utility pole already in the uh, the drive aisle, but I don't know if it's gonna get removed. Due to the uh, the widening of that, um, of the, of the drive, of the drive.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, we're not removing that pole, and there is a Cobra head light fixture on that pole. There's also Cobra head, um, kind of at the top, up by the playground, or what's the existing asphalt? Play surface that's gonna become the parking area, there's, so there's those two Cobra heads that, um, provide lighting currently. For those two areas, so we'll have lighting in there, um, you know, but we'll certainly take that back. And, and then there's gonna be the additional lighting on the building, which, you're right, it's not, it's gonna be limited, it's, it's not gonna cover the parking area, but we're looking at the Cobra heads to. Address that, but we'll review that with the district.
And also, I guess with the uh, the police department and the municipal engineer as well.
Yes.
Okay, and then uh my last comment was, uh, you know, I do see that you did do a, a stormwater management system design. And just wanna confirm that it was de- designed in accordance with the recently adopted stormwater management rules from the township?
Correct.
Okay, and you, uh, you're proposing infiltration, cause I see you have perforated pipe. Uh, has, has a geotechnical investigation been done to test the soils and make sure that it's adequate?
Yes, it has.
Okay, great. It's all questions that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Keenan on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a few. First up is Dubora Putensky, please state your name and address for the record.
So, the name is Deborah Butensky, B U T E N S K Y, eleven Rappley Court. Uh, first of all, I wanna thank the board for all their very cogent questions. Specifically, the mayor, uh, right on asking about uh compliance for the handicap kids. And Ms. and Dr. Bagoff, um, making the inquiries that you did. Um, but I have a, and somebody else asked, Mr. Alper also asked regarding. Um, landscaping, is there any, and somebody else asked, so we're losing O'Connor Field, is that correct? The whole baseball field that Mountaintop used to use? Is that correct?
Correct, the ball field that's there is not, is going to be occupied by the building, so it won't be able to use it as a ball field.
And there's no way that this ball field can be replaced? Because it was heavily used by mountain. Because it was heavily used by Mountaintop League.
I, I don't, not on this property, I mean, whether it could be used, replaced somewhere else in the township, but I, I can't speak to.
And, and the question regarding the lighting, but also the cameras to protect. To protect, you know, the, the buildings and the children on off hours is essential. So not only do you need adequate lighting for the parking, but you need adequate lighting for the cameras to be functional. Okay, um, and, and then my concern, which was the mayor's also regarding emergency vehicles to the school. What happens if you need ambulances and the fire department, is there adequate? And number four is about parking, as the, the mayor said, you're gonna have six classrooms to begin with, each one with an aide. That automatically is twelve, then you've got a nurse which is thirteen. Um, and then you've got parents coming in and out potentially, and you said you only had one handicapped spot. So it seems to me you've got too little parking going on as your plan is now existing. Any comments from the board?
Well, as, as I, as I uh said before, they're gonna have to let us know exactly how many staff and ancillary people will be there. And tell us how much parking, and then our township engineer will work with them to ensure that the appropriate amount of parking is available. Based on the numbers, right now they don't have the exact numbers, so uh, what you said, it, it, what you said makes sense. But we wanna make sure, and once they come back, then parking may have to be modified based on those numbers.
We're in agreement, I mean, but you know, a priori, there's six classrooms times two personnel plus, plus a nurse. You only have eleven spots that they have, we're saying the same thing, but even more so, we need. More spots than, definitely more spots, because you're gonna have. Parents dropping, dropping in also and parking and wanting to get into the building at certain times of day, they might be. You know, needing to pick up their kids during the day, so what has been proposed now is obviously inadequate.
Well, that's why, that's why, it's, that's why it's a condition. Uh, that they will have to come back to us to ensure that the appropriate amount of parking is available.
Uh, uh, agreed, no, thank you, okay, that's, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Seth, please state your name and ad- address for the record.
Uh, yes, hi, Seth Weisletter, uh, seventeen Howell Drive, West Orange. Uh, just one quick question um, from Mr. Ross, uh. You mentioned soil testing, was that soil tested for the new playground and the old playground where pre K teen, pre K kids will be. Playing uh for any contaminants or environmental issues?
Um, I can, I can answer that, but um, we, no, we did not test it for contaminated soils. We tested for permeability and to establish um depth water table.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got the uh mixed up, sorry, Mr. Keenan, um. So is there a plan to test the soil for contaminants, cause I believe in the state of New Jersey that you have to test. For contaminants prior to construction or approval?
We would have to, we, we'd have to um test. If we were taking the material offsite and removing it, but I'm not familiar with um, anything that requires us to test.
I.
Specific, I mean, usually it's just test randomly, I mean, if, there's certain triggers where you do a phase one, and then you do an evaluation to figure out whether there's. A need to even do testing, and then the testing would be the phase two. Um, but you don't, you don't go to that level, you don't just test. Everywhere you test because there's a cause for concern, there's nothing that I'm aware of here that has raised a cause for concern for contamination.
Well, my, based on my previous experience on a board where there was a pre K, um, testing was required for a play area. Um, to make sure there was no contaminants. So I think that's really important to make sure that. Be wherever these pre K kids are playing, I believe it's. Uh, pretty well, I'm only familiar with pre K, that soil does have to be tested for any playground surfaces that they would be playing on for contaminants. Um, so I, I think that should be something that needs to be looked into, or just um by the board.
Is, is that, the, so the question I have is, is the baseball, the baseball field is going to be this new area? Where the pre K kids will be playing, is that correct? Um, I, I, I'm just, it's lawn area that they may choose to have the kids go into, I don't, that's not really designated. What I'm trying to get at, is this, is this an, is this an area where kids are playing on it now? Yes. Okay, so the area they're playing on it now is going to be the area where they're playing on it then? Correct. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I am not sure, a- and I understand what you're asking, I don't know that um.
Is that a requirement, or is that?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Mr. Scott to weigh in on this, our engineer. Does, would it be reasonable to have them do soil testing on area that is not going to be cha- added to? It's the same, uh, from what I understand, it's going to be the same area, just a different usage, not baseball, but pre K. So would it make sense to do soil testing, because we believe that there's some contaminant? And wouldn't we have done soil testing to start out, what if we believe there was some contaminant because kids were playing there originally? Mr. Scott?
I, if I may, oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think if, if now you're introducing pre K kids, which changes the rules and regulations of that thing. But I'm not exactly sure on that, but I'll let Ms., I'll let your.
I, I'd let Mr. Scott weigh in on that for rules and regulations?
Thank you.
Yeah, so um, I'm not speaking in terms of the rules and regulations, I'm going, you know, because I. I would really need to consult with an environmental consultant um, in order to be able to get specifics on that. But the way that it typically works is when you are doing a new project or on a, on a new site, or if you're acquiring a new site. Typically, you would have to do some type of environmental testing, whether it be a phase one, and then. Based upon that phase one, whatever the findings that you have may lead to a phase two that which may require some type of environmental cleanup. Being that this property is not changing hands of any ownership, um, any environmental is probably not required. Um, but there may be some requirement of being that this is a school, typically when they're doing any type of a school use. Uh, environmental work is typically done in advance, usually before we even get to doing any engineering. So it's a very good chance that um, some type of environmental investigation. Um, or an environmental assessment or phase one or preliminary assessment has been done on this site. And the fact we've gotten to this point, and it hasn't been required, at least not to my knowledge. Uh, leads me to believe that there's probably not any uh contamination that's any major concern that would preclude them from building on this site.
Hmm, you, you know what, I, I'm going to err on the side of ultra conservative. And I would recommend as a condition that they do basic phase one testing, uh. Do, pick certain points directed by our uh consulting engineer. And if everything comes back neutral, then you're done. If there comes back areas of concern, then we would have to uh go further, does that make sense, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
I don't wanna encumber them, but I don't wanna miss something that could be problematic.
Absolutely, that, that, that would be, I, I think that would be a fair condition to, to.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, it, ultimately, it sounds like what, what you're recommending, though, is, is a phase two, which is. Only, only a phase one, only a phase one indicates there is, there's a hazard that needs to be addressed further. Well, the phase one would just be a desktop review, but to, I, I've done a lot of. Lot of schools and we've never, if it's an existing school, and I, I think Mr. Scott hit this uh, uh, point, if we were acquiring this property and there was a cause for. Concern or investigation, then that would warrant the phase one. Which then may warrant a phase two, but if it's an existing school that's been in the school's possession for a long time, and, and, and a project of this scale. You wouldn't typically do the phase one, but again, the phase one would be a desktop review. It would not be uh soils investigation. Okay, I could, I could go for phase one where you look to see if there in the last hundred years was any. Indication that there was a, a project, a building or something that could have left, could have had a toxic substance in the area.
But you have, if I may, Mr. Chairman, but you're introducing a new play area. You're also introducing a younger group of kids that puts their hands in their mouths and are touching dirt, so if there are particles.
Let me just pause there for a sec, we're not, the, the new play area is an asphalt play surface. So we're not introducing the kids to any ground dirt that. Um, well, really at all, the play surface is, is a hardened. Surface that they're not gonna, he, he, God forbid, there was some contamination under there, the kids wouldn't have any access to it, it's, it's, they're well protected from it. I'm gonna leave this up to Mr. Scott to do what he feels is the most reasonable, uh, knowing that they're pre K and children in the area. We'll leave that at the condition. Very good, thank you. Okay, do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any, but Lori has her hand, her hand raised. Uh, we have a Deborah back again. For another question.
Go right ahead.
Okay, please state your name and address again. You're muted? Just hit unmute.
Sorry, eleven Rappley Court, Debbie Butensky, so how, um, why aren't we using some type of rubber? Um, on this play area, like the type they have in the New York City school playgrounds, why are we using asphalt?
Chairman, that was part of the condition I had requested about the A S T M that would require a surface. Structure, I mean, not a structure, but it uh.
Material.
Covering, material.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Keenan's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
Okay, thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna close that portion of the meeting.
Oh, wait, Lori.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, yeah.
Ms. Capper.
Um, thank you, yeah, I just wanna clarify a question that Ms. Butensky asked about the O'Connor baseball fields, I, I believe that's a different location. The, the O'Connor Park is uh not the same as Mount Pleasant School, so just, yeah, wanted to clarify, we're talking about different, a different baseball field.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we're closing that portion of the meeting. Mr. Jukowski, do you want to uh?
Yeah, bas- basically, Mr. Chairman, just to, just to sum up, uh. The Board of Ed is required to appear before the Planning Board under section thirty-one of the Land Use Law. Basically for consistency with the master plan, and the board's purview is for a review and recommendation regarding to the plan. That was submitted by the Board of Education. Uh, I agree with uh the comments that were made, and we would request. That the board issue a letter. Indicating that it has reviewed the plan, that it is consistent with the master plan, as set forth in your planner's report. And the recommendations that were made, uh, which uh, I can work backwards with the engineer. Uh, appropriate lighting, uh, the uh. Consultation with regard to the existing crosswalk, the. And then the additional landscaping, the connectivity to the existing playground. Uh, the ability to see if we can make uh all the access points to the playground ADA compliant. Uh, also, uh, consideration of the playground surface along with uh. The video cameras, I think I, I hit on most of them, but I may have missed some, but uh, understood, and I wrote them down.
Okay, Ms. McGovern will supply you with our, our list, so ladies and gentlemen, the public, uh, we're not done yet. But we, this is called a courtesy review, a government agents, governmental agency comes before the planning board. And they ask questions and we provide information, we don't have uh sway over the, over the uh school system, we can only make recommendations. They take the recommendations and they choose to do uh whatever they wish with them. So to that end, uh, ladies and gen- ladies and gentlemen, the public, does anybody have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none.
Okay.
Do you have something?
Sorry.
No? Okay, I'll take that as a no, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting. So do any members of the board have any questions?
Uh, Chairman, I would like, um.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes, thank you, I would like to continue that list of conditions. Uh, that was just started to make sure that we have all of them. Diana?
Oh, sure, I, I was thinking you were gonna do it, and I have it.
Okay, I, I do have a list.
I'm keeping it, that's what I thought, okay, number one, additional landscaping, number two, video cameras on the playground. And or a police department review of a security plan. Uh, number three, review of ADA compliance regarding the sidewalk and uh the. Distance or the uh walkway between the main building and the proposed play area. Number four, uh, basic phase one testing should be done to determine if further soil testing. Uh, and will work with the township engineer's recommendations regarding that. Number five, adequate lighting on the building should be added with respect to the drive aisle and the parking lot, again, working with the township engineer for. Suggestions, number six, comply with A S T M. Playground sta- safety standards for ages two through twelve. Number seven, the number of staff uh. That is anticipated to be working at the modular building to be provided. To the town to ensure the number of parking spaces are adequate, again, working with. Uh, the township engineer to figure out parking areas. And number eight, work with the township engineer to shift the crosswalk on Ellison.
Okay, Ms. McGovern? For the A S F, A S T M, it's A S T M. F is in Frank, one, four, eight, seven, for public playground equipment ages two through twelve. And A S T M, F two, three, seven, three, for playground equipment, children age six months to twenty-three months.
Okay, I forgot, I didn't get the first F number, so the first one is F.
The first one is A S T M, F one, four, eight, seven, for public playground equipment ages two through twelve.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, you're welcome.
And I want to apologize to Mr. Scott for interrupting his line of questioning.
Okay.
So I wanna thank all members of the planning board and members of the public, I think you've done a great job to help us get this. Off the road, so I make a motion that we recommend to this uh. To the school board that this plan is consistent with a master plan, based on the information and the recommendations we provide to the school system. Um, do I have a second on the motion? I'm sorry, it is, hang on. Uh, PB twenty-five dash oh five, West Orange Planning Board, block one seventy-two lot, twenty-nine dot oh one, zone twenty-nine dot oh one. Nine, Main Street Road. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman's seconds, on the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Novaring?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
No, no.
No, no, she's refused.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes, with the conditions.
Mr. Wayno?
Yes, with the conditions.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes, motion carries, Mr. Ross, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Jukowski, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you for your consideration, have a good evening.
Have a great evening, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then we'll have the next applicant before us. Okay. Okay, guys, I think we should get back on the record. Hello there. Megan, are we back on the record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. PB 24 dash 14, 172, 174, Main Street LLC, Block 83 Lot 1 and 5 dot 01, Zone B1, 172, 174, Main Street. The applicant, 172, 174, Main Street LLC proposes to construct a third floor addition to an existing two-story building and convert the building to a mixed-use building. The proposed mixed-use building will contain 2,824 square feet of office space on the first floor and a total of seven residential units on the second and third floor. Additionally, uh, 26 existing onsite parking spots will al- also be appro- uh, provided for the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, uh, members of the board. Uh, we're here tonight really just to, um, address a few of the issues that were, that were raised by the board and members of the public, specifically the elevator, uh, second means of egress from the third story, uh, structural materials for the third floor, uh, renderings of the building as proposed, uh, the slope of the parking lot, the building height, uh, in relation to the surrounding buildings. Uh, so tonight we'll put on the testimony of Donna Bullock, our engineer, and, uh, Jason Peist, our architect. Uh, so if the board has no questions for me, I'd like to call Mr. Peist, um, to provide that testimony.
Okay, Ms. Mc- Ms. McGovern, he's been sworn. Do we have to square him again?
Uh, let's see, our last meeting on this was, I'll just remind you.
On the second, May 2nd.
May 7th. Yeah, so, um, you're still under oath, Mr. Peist.
Okay, thank you. Um, I will share my screen. Uh, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to summarize how we address the board's comments. Is that one of our reasons is missing? Um, exterior lighting, uh, no exterior lighting is proposed at the rear of the building. Um, private, privacy film on your windows, uh, the rear third floor windows will have a privacy film installed and maintained as noted on the plans. Um, white roof, a white roof roof is proposed and noted on the roof plan. HVAC units and sound partition. HVAC units have been relocated and solidated at the front of the building to reduce impact on neighbors. A sound insulation partition has been added as well. Um, the big item was the elevator. Um, the second and third floor area is 2950 square feet per floor, which is below the 3,000 foot, uh, square foot threshold per floor requiring an elevator has been our intent since the start of project. Um, so we do not require an elevator. Um, regarding the, uh, second means of egress, um, we have provided fire escapes as noted in the town ordinance. Um, the two fire escapes, uh, replace the previously existing ones that they have. Um, these are code compliant and do not trigger any new variances consistent with Section 25 dash 8.2 of the township code regarding, regarding permitted yard encroachments. Um, third floor structural material, the wall construction of the third floor will match the existing wall type of end thickness. Um, so we're just matching what the second floor has. Um, building history, um, the original building was legally permitted on September 13th, 1977 under permit number 18859 and was completed and opened in 1979. Um, and then the last item was the renderings. Um, I have provided a, uh, existing photograph and a proposed photograph of the exterior. Do you have any questions?
Just, uh, one, Mr. Peist, just to be clear, this is all summarized in a letter that you sent and has been submitted to the board?
Correct.
Right. I, I have no further questions, uh.
Just for the record, that letter is dated June 16th, 2025, and it is posted on the agenda.
Hey. Vice Chairman Garino, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, I appreciate the list that was just provided. Is there, was there any mention about any additional landscaping anywhere?
I'll share that with the engineer.
Okay.
Okay. Councilperson Scarpia, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
Uh, not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert. Do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
I'm not sure if for him or for the engineer, but, um, I think one thing that was asked about at the last meeting, but that hasn't been addressed was whether there were, um, renderings or calculations for, uh, the, the additional shade that would be thrown on the nearest properties, uh, with the taller building.
Um, so I, I'm not a, uh, shadow engineer and I cannot provide expert testimony um, regarding shadows. Uh, the building complies with the height limitations, which is set by the zoning ordinance as a general way of reducing shadows. A shadow study is not required under the West Orange Code and is beyond the scope of this application. Um, there is no ordinance in West Orange that regulates shadows cast by a building.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Captain Norberino, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
I just have one regarding the fire escapes. So it says that you're replacing the fire escapes that were here, but it looks like there's, there are actually full door egresses.
I'm sure.
There was.
Um, so the doors are not required in the, uh, ordinance. Um, you're allowed to have windows and you meet all the window requirements for the opening.
Okay, I was just trying to get some clarification. It could have sounded like you said that you were replacing the existing fire escapes. And it appears that there's no fire escapes. It's just a, a normal stairwell, uh, means to egress on either side of the building. So with the
That, that was, yeah, that's their, their ways of egress from the existing building. Um, so we would have the fire escapes on the side, uh, meeting the regulation, uh, for the township.
Yeah, understood. I just want to be clear that you would be adding fire escapes, not replacing existing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Uh, Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Capfer, do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
Not at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Do you have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony?
Uh, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have, uh, Eric Buckley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Eric Buckley. I live at 8 Edge Hill Court.
Go right ahead, sir.
Oh, yeah, so I believe in the previous, uh, iterations of these drawings, it was stated that the total building area was 6,458. And so that would be equal to 3,229 square feet per floor. So I'm wondering how the building's from on the second floor.
Um, so again, these drawings are meant for planning board. Um, it's not a, a full, um, construction level plan or review. Um, to the inside face, which is what is the requirement of the, um, elevator requirement, I have listed all the square footages. Um, so we are below all the requirements. Um, the dimensions, if you want to do the math yourself, is 51.92 times 56.83 gives you 2950.
Which is less than So I looked at this, uh, more thoroughly and that's to the inside face of a furring wall, which is an interior wall, not the exterior.
But that, that's what the elevator requirement has.
I'm confused. The building area is, is measured to
The elevator requirement is reverse floor area to the inside face of the finish.
No, it's to the exterior wall.
It's not to the exterior. It's to the inside base.
I'll read the definition if you would like.
Go ahead again.
It says, "Building area is the area included within surrounding exterior walls." That's from
That, go, go back to the elevator reference. The elevator reference refers to the inside face of that. That's where the confusion is.
The inside face of an exterior wall. You can't just fur out a wall until the building's
You can. It's the inside face of the unit. That's allowed.
What unit?
To the inside face, we have 56.83 times 51.92, which is 2950. That is the gross floor area.
Gross?
Exactly. That is what is required of the elevator.
If we're talking about gross floor, that includes the exterior walls. So that's not the
No, it's the gross, the way that is written is it says to the interior space of the wall.
Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, excuse me, I'm gonna stop this discussion. This is gonna be a function of the Building Department in West Orange.
It will be. It, yeah, and I, and I agree with that. I hundred percent agree with that. I just want to, I just want a clarification on how the, the existing building's from.
Sure. The, 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 the Building Department will look at the ordinance. They will look at his calculations and they will make a determination, is this consistent with their understanding of the ordinance? And our engineer will weigh in on that, I'm sure.
We already mentioned a condition that the board had indicated in one of the last several meetings we've had that the Building Department and Fire Subcode, so subcode officials shall review the need for an elevator and additional means of egress. If either are required, applicant must return to the board regarding changes to the plan resulting from the addition of an elevator and/or additional means of egress. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Buckley, do you have any questions, sir?
Oh, yeah. So that would happen after this process is what you're stating. The, the, uh, the review by the building subcode official.
Yes, after this process, if, if approved, if not approved, no, but if, if approved, yes, it will go to the building subcode official or the building official and they will send to the subcode official and they will review the ordinance and the requirements of elevator and, uh, fire escape.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Peist on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have someone named Anne.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you, Anne Hirsch, twelve Edge Hill Road. I would be in. Eye sight of this building. Um, so uh, I was. Wondering, I last meeting, it seemed as though this, the um, fires, there was to be one fire escape. Now I'm hearing there's two, and it will be on the sides, which to me. Seems like a great jumping off point for somebody who wants to go into this gated community without an invitation. But in the front, if they put it in the front, it would be less of a constant threat to those of us with um, let's say, young children living around here. So um, why was that not a a a consider?
The fire escapes purely serve as a means of emergency exits. The ordinance will have for regulations in them that will prohibit people from putting barbecues or things on them. Um, it's in the standards. Um, the existing exits for the building, which were the staircases, which you can see here, are already on the side of the building. Uh, we want to maintain a clean front. Um, you would not see the fire escapes from the front of the building. Um, if you look at the rendering, um, this is the chimney that sticks out right over here.
Excuse me, Mr. Mr. Pisces, I seen, I don't see a picture, what is, what I have is two minutes, ten seconds is showing on my thing, I don't.
Okay.
I believe, I believe what, I believe your description, um, but your description about no, um, you know, barbecue and such. I I appreciate that, and I'm sure that is correct. Um, my understanding of somebody who would be at like, um, their job title might be burglar or something. Probably wouldn't care about those ordinances and the fact that the fire escape, which you claim now again. Already exists, and I think there's a question about that now, because the um, the threat is to us that the building will be raised. The fire escape certainly would be raised as well, and that higher fire escape is my concern, because the higher it is. It's more of a jumping off or leaping point, if you will, that was my um, men meaning.
It it's in the township regulation that it's required. Um, again, we are meeting the requirement of the township. Um, there is no side yard uh, bearing requirements for these escapes. Um, they've had other tests uh, in prior time, they've mentioned that somebody had to come back for fire escapes. Um, so we're not the only building in the township that has these.
Right, but 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 sir, sir, you are, I don't know, one of how many few few people uh, numbers. That in nineteen seventy seven was given a questionable variance allowance.
Ma'am, 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 ask, please ask a question, don't, don't testify. Please don't testify, just ask a question.
Okay, um, when you say it's allowed, I wonder how it is allowed. Um, when maybe there is no precedence to some uh, building that has not. It that has gotten to be where it is through a graciousness of the town, or maybe perhaps an over graciousness. Um, maybe that when when you say, oh, it's been done, it has to be done, maybe this is a different. Um, a a a different situation is what we are saying, uh, is is my question. Do you not see that that might be a different situation?
I mean, buildings exist. Um, again, we're doing what we are with the building um, to meet the regulations. Um, I have no control over what was existing existing on this building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Uh, for Mr. Pisces on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Cheryl Johnson Sanders, Saunders, sorry.
Go right ahead.
You're muted? You're still muted. Sorry, hang on, I just lost shit.
Okay, can we come back to her? Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Jonathan Barton.
Go right ahead.
We have to change the timer.
I will.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Um, good evening. Um, I just wanted to back up uh, my neighbor.
We can't hear you, sir.
Wait, I think I, he moved. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can we move him back?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Hey, sorry, um, not sure what happened there, but uh, I'm Jonathan Barton from Ten Edge Hill Court. And I just wanted to um, pop on just because I feel like um, my my neighbor Anne's point got a little bit lost. Um, I won't take much time, but. I just wanted to ask uh, Mr. Pisces that uh, if if you acknowledge that because of the differing setback, meaning that. Um, I mean, it's been discussed ad nauseam, you know, it abuts our property, it's less than ten feet from the fence. Um, that. You can, you can see how the concern would change slightly uh, with, you know. Essentially like a ladder that goes above the the fence line, um, which in a traditional uh, you know, building. That has a proper setback of thirty feet, you know, that that's not as much of a concern, because you know, someone couldn't just like pop over. But if you're only, you know, a few feet back from the abutting fence, uh, it's essentially a ladder. So, you know, I I was just wondering if if you acknowledged the point that my my neighbor made, and um, yeah, that that was my question.
Um, again, again, it's a requirement. Um, it was brought up in the last meeting, uh, we're meeting the requirement. Um, so it has to be a component of the building.
Mr. Pisces, is there any way to provide protection, so there's no way for a person? Uh, from the uh, from the fire escape to go backwards onto the other property?
Um, I I I would, I would say that uh, we're far enough from the edge. That it would be very difficult to. Um, we would also talk to the township about specifics of the fire escapes. Um, and I would ask them if they have a preference. Um, in fire escapes, there's a variety of them, so we try to work with the town.
Okay, so I'll I'll ensure a condition that you'll work with the township to provide a fire escape that blocks any access. If possible, to the uh, area behind the building.
Correct.
Is there anything else?
No, that I just uh, that I wanted to pop in to to kind of uh, point out that that one thing that my neighbor brought up, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Okay.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Anna Penya. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Annie Penya, and I live at ten Swayze Street in West Orange. I was proud resident. Um, I just want to say that I'm fully supportive of this development and ask to please approve the application for the third floor addition.
Thank you very much. Do and do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
The names keep jumping around. We're going to go to Stan Shapiro.
Okay.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, I'm Stan Shapiro. I live at twelve Edge Hill Road. I just wanted to follow up on on an earlier question uh, about the change in square footage for the second and third floors. How did it go from uh, from oh, three thousand and several hundred to just under three thousand?
Uh, it was exterior face for the calculation. Uh, I was using that because that is a building coverage. Um, the inside face of the wall is the building definition. Um, requirement, um, there are thick walls. Um, so we're matching the thicknesses um, and would meet the dimensions.
So. Allowed. So you're, you're saying is that just based on the the thickness of the wall as it exists right now, or as it will be built? It's going to be built the same thick sick, well, let me break this down. Is it the plan to um, that the additional floor or uh, um, you know, and the changes in the exterior walls? Will have the same thickness as the existing exterior walls? I mean, what is that thickness?
Um, I don't have it all figured.
Well, you used it to make your calculation, right?
I again, I I don't have the exact calculation, we're matching the two dimensions like A.
You have an exact calculation in the plan that you submitted of twenty nine fifty, suddenly it magically came to just under three thousand. And and so I'm just asking you, you had to have that thickness to make that calculation.
Going to be a whole. Maybe I can, um, maybe I can just add some clarity here, so the, when we're before the planning board, we're depicting the site overall. And then when we actually go and build the building, we work with the Building Department, and that's what determines whether or not we're required to have an elevator. And the building, the plan is that we're going to be uh, under that three thousand square feet, I believe Mr. Pisces said twenty nine fifty, is that right?
Correct.
And then we would not be required to have an elevator, but we will work with the uh, Building Department, and that will be a condition of approval of this application.
All right, so it it Mr. Uh, Z Barrett, you're saying that the plan that's submitted is not really uh, what what you're planning to build?
No, that is not, that is incorrect.
All right, so then I asked the architect, I or uh, I I asked the witness. What was the, what was the thickness of the wall that he used to to calculate a number? He gave a plan to the board and to the public of twenty nine hundred and fifty square feet. He had to base that on some, on some mathematical computation based upon actual. Say it again?
A fixed interior dimension, a whole dimension. So the inside faces will be those two dimensions that I gave previously.
The inside faces. So how thick is the wall?
It doesn't matter, it's the inside face.
How thick is the wall that you use to make that calculation?
I don't have that.
Go from thirty three hundred and fifty to 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 magically to twenty nine fifty, or you're saying is. I I I I don't get this, I mean, it's a plant, all right, so, so. So you came in and you presented a number that you just made up, right?
It's not a made up number, it is a whole dimension. You're allowed to have a whole dimension on a construction's uh.
Hold, H O L D?
Yep.
So, so it is a.
Inside face, inside face.
It it is a dimension that you're going to uh, um. You're you're saying is you're, when it's built, you're going to um, um. Make the the space inside the building less than than the actual um, footprint. In order to avoid the need for an for an elevator?
Correct.
But you don't know what that dimension is, how you, what you're, how you're going to do that, I'm skeptical. Okay, so now my, uh, another question, and this maybe is to, yeah, I I'm, since I'm new to this stuff. Um. There's been now a change in the plans. Uh, that had been submitted to the public, you know, previously, the new uh, the new dimensions of on the floors. And the new um, a and the addition of um, of the uh, what you call the fire escapes. Does that change require a new notice to the public? I I.
No, because there's no, I can answer that, because there's no variances required, there's no change to uh, the application that would require additional notice.
I see.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shapiro.
Those are my questions, thank you.
At the time. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Sophie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Great, go ahead.
Hi, Sophie Lubin, Eight Edge Hill Court. Um, my question, Mr. Pisces, so um, myself and many other residents have raised concerns about um. The lack of context um, and lack of kind of historical connection to the surrounding area, specifically to Llewellyn Park and to the. Um, Edison Lofts and the um, Thomas Edison Museum. I'm curious if you could talk through some of the decisions that you made in terms of material choices and architectural details. Um, and where where if at all you considered the surrounding areas.
Um, so the existing building is a mid-century institutional. Um, it's a brutalist influenced commercial style that was common in the suburbs. Um, in the nineteen sixties to the nineteen eighties. Um, the prior uh, the opposing uh, planner described it as ultra-modern, um, which it is not. Um, is a contemporary commercial architecture. Um, is defined by clean line, minimal ornamentation, mixed materials, large windows and a flat roof. Um, we were using natural materials. And we're giving a clean uh, contemporary look to the building.
What do you mean by natural materials?
Um, there's going to be stone veneer, um, there's going to be wood uh, paneling. Um, on there, um, we're using different things to make it have a natural uh, feel to it.
Is that wood paneling actually wood, or is it metal that's meant to look like wood?
It's a composite.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so did you reference any of the, you know, any of the surrounding buildings, the Edison Lofts? Any, any kind of historical elements when you were making those choices?
Um, we were using what building that we had, working with an existing building. Um, so we wanted to work with what we had.
Okay, so I'll take that as a no. Um. Second question, I don't know if you can answer that, answer this, um, it was brought up, I believe it was a condition or um. Request from the board that there was a um, shadow study done, understand that that's not in your domain, but um. Who who is responsible for providing that? Do does anyone, does anyone know?
Um, I can, I can speak to that, so a shadow study is beyond the scope of a site plan application. Uh, West Orange does not have any ordinance that addresses the need for a shadow study. Uh, the only time that's implicated really is when the building exceeds the permitted building height. So here it's, it's really just not warranted, and it's not required by the ordinances, therefore no shadow study was conducted.
Well. Correct, and I already heard that explanation, but um, wa- wasn't it a request from the board? From the last meeting?
It was, it was discussed, um, it is not a request that is required for this application.
Okay, could the board confirm that? Because I I remember that being a request from the last meeting, I might have, I I don't remember from who.
It was a question that I had asked, um, it it wasn't in the context of, you know, something that we were discussing adding as a condition to the. To approval or anything like that, but it was a question that I had asked and that I'd hoped that we would have been able to. See some data on.
Yeah, right, right, understood, it's not a condition, but a request for uh, the experts to provide something for this meeting was.
Yes, and unfortunately, just it wasn't a feasible study that we could conduct.
Hmm.
Okay, thank you very much, you've exhausted your time, uh, we appreciate the comments. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do, we have Eric. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, yes, uh, this Eric, um, on Clean Street, uh, West Orange. Um, I live close to Main Street, and I've seen this particular building um, starting. And I just want to. Show my full support for developing this building.
Thank you, thank you, so you can do that in public comment. Do you have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony, sir?
No, no questions.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have Cheryl Johnson Saunders, again.
There she goes.
Uh, this is Cheryl at one forty Clark and Drive, I'm just stating that I approve the application and with the development. Main Street definitely need to be developed more like other cities, thank you.
Very much, Mr. Johnson Saunders, we appreciate your sentiments. Uh, do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pisces on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Lenny Carr.
Hi, good evening, uh, board members, um, and everyone, my name is Lenny Carr, I live at eighty three Mountain Avenue. Um, and my question is just around the shadow study, I think that, you know, I'm 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 really uh, just perplexed, because the question is. Or at least the justification is that a shadow study wasn't done because it meets the height requirement. But what's really not being said is you have such a setback here that was permitted up to two floors, where you're only. Eight feet away from the property, uh, or ten feet away at most from the property, and what we're now saying is. We want an encroachment to go one full story higher, ten feet away from a neighbor's property. That's going to cast a significant shadow and really impair and devalue the home. And I thought that that was something that's just, at least, you know, uh, a a a good thing to do, so we really understand the impact. It's not just that it meets the requirement. It's not just that it meets the requirements. We're adding a significant addition onto uh uh an encroachment on the property. So.
Sir, you could, you can ask a question if Mr. Pis please that.
Yeah, I just, my question is, you know, is why is a shadow study uh uh not being required when it's uh a. When it's being asked for such a variance where you're only ten feet away from the property and you want to go much higher? If it was a normal course, then I understand the building height is okay, but when you're, you know, ten feet away from a property and you want to go higher, I think a shadow study. It it wouldn't a shadow study be uh a a positive thing?
Mr. Pis, you're up.
I I don't think it's necessary for this property, to be honest.
If you were, if you were living on the, if you were living on the back of that property, if you were living sort of where that building was 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 encroaching, do you think a shadow would be? Uh, uh, would you be asking for a shadow study, Mr. Pis?
I mean, trees cast shadows, the tree.
You're not, I asked you a question. If you were living in the home, would you ask for a shadow study if it was your house that was being impacted and and devalued in property?
Truthfully, no on this one.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't care.
As an architect, I wouldn't ask.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay, that's the truth.
Mr. Pis, if if you can maybe um talk about, you know, the background of this building, the Oprah request that we.
We had, we we had pulled the Oprah request um where we found the documentation, including permit number. Um, when it was built, uh, I read through all of the documentation of that. Um, and again, I said, we had done our due diligence.
I I have a question for that. We um as neighbors of the Llewellyn Park also put in an opera request for the permit and we were denied it. Um, and said that there wasn't any information around it. Is can, is there, is there a reason for that?
That's something that really needs to be addressed with the town clerk. Uh, that's not something that we as the applicant can address.
Oh, are you okay? We did put in an Oprah request, uh, and we were told that nothing exists from the permits uh from from that time. So it's just curious to me that it was granted in one case and not the other.
Uh, Mr. Carr, if you want to, um, I'll give you my email address or you can give me yours and I'm happy to share the Oprah response.
Yeah, that would be great. I just, uh, again, we would have loved to have seen that before uh and not respond to it. You understand why I would be. Uh, why we would all be concerned about that. Thank you.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr. Uh, do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pis on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We have someone named Anne who might have already spoke already. Letter, letter in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Yeah, um, so the the thing, the email with that information that's so important to us that Mr. Carr is luckily getting, um, may we have it as well?
Yes, that's that's fine. I mean, it's not really part of the application. These are matters of public record. These are readily available to everyone. I understand that you may have been denied. Uh, the Oprah response, but that's something that you uh would have to take up with the town clerk. Uh, but I I would be happy to provide that. Um.
Thank you so much.
If we can get a contact person and maybe they can circulate that around, um.
I'm gonna make a suggestion to the members of the public that didn't think that they that their Oprah request was granted. A lot of times it's the way you phrase your Oprah request um that. Causes a confusion or perhaps, or that that they don't know, no, no, don't know in the clerk's office where they should seek out the information. Um, so I don't know what the actual request was, but mister's. That the the attorney for the applicant um. Has been doing this a lot of years and probably phrased it in such a way and or various different components that that may have been why he got a response.
Thank you. Do any.
It's not through the planning board offices, just to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Pis on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Oh. Um, so I might have clicked off Amy, Amy Bryant, did you want? Did you have a question? No, I think I think she's okay.
Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna close that portion of the meeting. Mrs. Evero, you're up.
I have uh nothing further uh for Mr. Pis unless the board has any questions. Um, I'd like to call Donna's um Bullock, our engineer.
Go right ahead.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bullock.
Ms. Bullock, you're still under oath.
Thank you. So I'd like to briefly discuss the changes um on the plans uh per the past few meetings um. To uh just discuss some plan changes that were uh requested by the board and and in engineers review letters that we have addressed. Um. For the building, we added the fire escapes. For the parking lot upgrades, we added a trash enclosure. At the uh north end of the parking lot at an end space, we've added two E V spaces. We've added bumper blocks. We've added a new fence on the north side. We are replacing a retaining wall on the south side. We assigned seven spaces labeled R P residential parking along the south side of the lot. The uh Bilco door at the end of the parking uh is to be removed and we are proposing one ground sign. So for the parking, the final count is that we have twenty standard parking spaces with one handicap space. Two E V spaces, which counts as four spaces. So we have twenty standard for E V. Uh, two E V with two with two credits equals four plus the handicap. We have twenty-five spaces provided where twenty-five is required. So therefore, there will not be no need for a bulk variance uh requirement for the parking. For lighting, we will adjust the uh lighting levels to maintain the oh point three foot candles at the property lines. And um as requested, we added the aerial site triangle sheet into uh the plan set, a sheet one of one. And as far as the landscaping, we do not show any proposed landscaping, but we have many notes about cleaning up. The site about overgrowth and vegetation and, you know, vegetation within the cracks of the of the paved area. So it's going to be cleaned up. Um, it's going to be cleaned up by the applicant. And. Then I'd like to discuss, um, we did submit a plan entitled Boundary and Topographic Survey dated one fourteen twenty twenty-five. Um, with a revision date of six twelve twenty-five, that uh revision added adjacent building heights and grade shots. So I'd like to quickly talk about uh the uh the three properties to the north and the pre-properities to the south of of our property. So if we look at the uh lot fourteen, which is three properties south. It is a two and a half story over a garage and the distance from the grade at the uh grade elevation at the garage. To the uh peak of the building is twenty, is forty-two point one feet. Moving along to lot twelve, it's a two and a half story residential dwelling. And from grade to peak, we have thirty-seven point four feet. Moving to lot ten, it is an existing two and a half story residential dwelling. Where we have uh from grade to peak thirty-six feet.
Now, Ms. Bullock, um, what is the proposed height for the subject property for uh Mr. Cox's property?
Oh, thir- thirty, thirty-four point five feet.
Okay, so that's that's lower than all, smaller than all of the buildings to the north.
Yes, that is correct. It is. Thank you for.
Okay, and sorry, uh, you can continue on to the south of the property.
Okay, so on the south side, um, adjacent lot five. Um, from grade to uh peak, we have thirty-seven point six feet, which is greater than our thirty uh or thirty-four point five. Then moving on to lot four, where we have a two and a half story building with a garage in the front. Where we have uh thirty-seven. I'm sorry, thirty-three point nine feet from the grade at the at the garage to the roof peak. And then finally, lot three, um, it is a two-story uh dwelling um that has from grade. Uh, or finished floor twenty-six point nine feet. So of the of the six lots we evaluated. Uh, five of them, uh, sorry, three of them are less. Up or greater than our proposed height of of thirty-four point five feet. So that's uh, that's my summary of the changes on the plan.
Sorry, Ms. Bullock, just to clarify, so uh you was your testimony that there were three or four that were uh taller than what we're proposing?
There are three taller than what we're proposing and there are the uh three that are located. Well, I'm sorry. There are four. Properties within the six that are taller than our proposed height of thirty-four point five. Two of the buildings, which are actually more of a commercial use to the north for lot four and lot lot three. Um, are lower, a thirty-three point nine feet height and a twenty-six point nine feet height.
Thank you.
And I'd like to mention that um looking at the engineer's letter of June thirtieth, uh reviewing it, um. Other than a few things I just testified about um the parking variance and providing the correct lighting uh requirements. Uh, we agree with the with everything in the engineer's letter. And that's the end of my testimony.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman Bagel.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilperson Scarp, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No, no, I don't.
Thank you, Councilperson Scarp. Uh, Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert. Captain Norberini, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No questions at this time, Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Cardoz, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cafferty, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Uh, yeah, uh, just one question. Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Bagoff, uh, and thank you, Miss Bullock, for your testimony. Can you describe again um the the measurements that you were just providing? Um, was that uh? From a person's driveway to the top of the structure on their property? Can can you describe again what that's illustrating?
Certainly, um. We have provided on the uh the updated Boundary and Topographic Survey. We show spot shots at the uh the edge of the property or the location of the sidewalk. Then we show uh spot shots on on both the right and the left of the dwellings, which would be considered average grade. You the 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 grade at the property. We also calculate some finished floor elevations. And then with those three in mind, we just subtract from the uh average grade. Minus the peak to get the actual height of each structure.
Okay, so um so the kind of what that what you're trying to illustrate with that is if someone is walking on the sidewalk, for instance, that on Edge Hill that. That the height of the buildings there would be greater in mo- in, well, in some cases. Than the top of the building uh that 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 is uh the the point of this application is that. Is that what you're trying to um trying to show?
Well, I. It's if if you look at the the elevation from the street.
Mm-hmm.
All these, all the properties, especially to the south, um, have uh, you know, like walkways and then a platform and then another walkway to get to their front porch. So at the area of the front porch, we got grade shots.
Mm-hmm.
We also got the front porch shot, which would be the finished floor. So what we did was um we excluded. Um, everything from the house toward the street, even though we can calculate that that change in elevation. Um, but what's more uh important to note is the uh average grade around the dwelling. To the the existing peak height and and that's what we're looking at to come up with the existing um average height of each structure.
So so you're just trying to illustrate then that um most of the structure or. Half, I guess, in this case of the structures in the area of the ones that you surveyed are greater height than the building that's the subject of this application. Is that right?
That is correct. Four of the six lots evaluated are all have a greater height than our proposed thirty-four point five feet.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that for me.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Cafferty. Uh, one thing, Ms. Bullock, the back of the building, even though it's not a large area. Uh, I made a site visit. There's a lot of debris there. I would like the applicant to clean it up spotless and maintain that in perpetuity. Whatever needs to be done, needs to be maintained in perpetuity.
There are notes on the cover sheet that say exactly that, that it will be cleared uh and maintained. Um, as as a, you know, as part of the uh site plan application, of course.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Yes, just wanna get some clarification. In terms of the uh the revised uh totals that you provided and so with the heights. Were any of the properties that you cite the heights of? Did you take into account the setbacks of the properties or were you just going strictly by the building?
We just went straight to the building peak. We didn't um have the ability to like like survey each lot. Uh, we were able to get elevations, turn the gun, get some shots. Um, as far as like locating the structure itself, we would have had then. As you know, we would have had to done a a property survey for each one to get the front lines and the boundaries. So that was not something that we did. We did locate them approximately with the grade shots. And draw the uh, as you see on the map, draw a a front line for the front of the house and then two sides to indicate the approximate location. Um, again, shooting the left and right side um for existing grade elevations.
Okay, just to the best of your recollection and and um knowledge, were any of the buildings setback to the extent that the subject property building is setback?
Oh, no, these um, the these houses are all uh along the front edge of the property. They're all, you know, uh in 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 um. You know, with the residential look for the properties to the to the south, uh, they are setback. Close to the feet, uh, close to the street, which if I get a real quick scale, just to get an idea. Um, we're looking at, you know, uh, forty, thirty-five, forty-foot setbacks, whereas on the north side. Two of the buildings are at the right of way, um, because there's a garage and then the building beyond. But then the the one on lot five closest to our property to the north, that one is also pretty close to the road, very close to the road. That's about twenty-two feet off. So as as you know, our property uh building, its existing conditions where it was built. Um, in in its um uh infancy uh is a hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty-seven feet.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Scott, do you have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony?
Uh, yes, uh, just uh one first comment. Um, thank you, Ms. Bullock, for uh addressing the comments from our previous meeting. I did receive your revised uh drawings. We have addressed uh many of our issues. Uh, one question that I did have, and I can't tell based on this plan, is whether or not. Um, there's been a, I guess, a resolution in terms of the conflict between the proposed lift. And the uh Bilco doors for the basement of the building. Is it's that something that's been resolved? Are those doors going to be removed and? And that access is going to be taken away from the building?
Of course, yes. The Bilco doors are proposed to be removed. Um, we we show them in the existing conditions, but on the site plan portion, they are not shown where the proposed lift is going to be placed.
Okay, that's all I had right at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Could I just ask a real quick question?
Go right ahead, Ms. McGovern.
Um, you test, you testified earlier, you agreed with everything in the matrix report dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with the exception of the parking variance, because now you've solved that problem. And what was the other, what was the other option?
The other one was your request um for the addressing the lighting concerns, which. Where is lighting? Number, number six point one.
Okay.
So we will, we will make sure that the plan is revised to depict the uh, you know, the existing poles on site and modify, make modifications. If necessary, if we have more than oh point three foot candles um going beyond the property line.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do. We have. Excuse me. Um. They keep going away. Uh, Stan Shapiro. State your name and address again for the record.
Yes, yes, hi. Uh, Stan Shapiro, twelve Edge Hill Road.
Yes, yes, hi. Uh, Stan Shapiro, twelve Edge Hill Road. So um I'm trying to understand this exercise that you you can you that you testified to about the the heights of the uh of the budding or neighboring properties. But all of the but uh did I understand right that all of the others, all of the s- other six properties have their buildings up close to the sidewalk on Main Street, and only this one is set way back over a hundred, a hundred and twenty-something feet off the uh off the sidewalk?
That's correct.
So the heights, so this doesn't blend in when you're saying they're all in the thirties, you know, four four of them are higher a little bit and two of them are lower a little bit. It's really apples and oranges because because the building you're proposing and seeking a variance to build another floor is way off of them. It's not, it's not in line with them at all, right?
Well, but the study was to show the building heights in the area. So it it doesn't matter if the building is next to ours or in the front. Um, these houses um require the same building height as our building, and we're showing that the actual building heights are uh greater.
Uh, well, it does matter to the neighboring properties that are that that the that uh this proposal, which is seeking the variance, is encroaching right up against when the others are not, right? It looms much larger to the high to the houses on the Llewellyn, on the other side of Llewellyn Park fence, doesn't it?
Um. I mean, if you look at where the where the pro uh where the dwellings are next to the roadway, um, they're they're many, many feet away from the building, sixty, sixty feet or so um in front of the building. Um, I think we're just doing the exercise to show that uh there are inconsistencies inconsistencies within the adjacent properties um that better justify uh a uh relief for the three stories where we still meet the height requirement of thirty-five because we're proposing thirty-four point five where adjacent dwellings um have a hu- higher height than the thirty-four point five.
Now, most of the
Mr. Shapiro, just to be clear, the reason why we provided those adjoining building heights is because they were requested by the board because the the height limit in this zone is thirty-five feet. We're proposing thirty-four point five, so we're not requesting a height variance. We're requesting a story variance. Uh, so of the six
And an encroachment variance, right? Uh, you're you're requesting a variance as to the stories and as to how close it is to the to the lot, right? It's your variance.
Those are existing nonconformities. Um, but yes, those are are
You need a new variance because you're adding another floor, another story, right?
No, we need a variance for the, yes, we're requesting variances for the existing nonconforming uh which were approved in the seventies. Uh, the building was constructed with approvals. There's no notes that any variances were required at that time. Uh, what we're requesting is a variances for the existing nonconformities because that's what we have to do because the building exists as it exists. Uh, we're not increasing uh the distance or decreasing the distance from the property lines. Uh, the building footprint is remaining the same. So in essence, our application is for uh an additional half story over what's permitted.
The um uh going back to the testimony uh and the and the heights you measured, um um Ms. Bul- Bullock, you you these other, the residential properties, the budding, uh you talked about their peaks. Uh, were any of the residential properties flat-roofed?
No, no, they were not.
So you measured it to the highest point of a peak?
Correct.
But much of the roof, much of the roof and height was well below that, right?
Um.
Or did you make measurements of the lowest part of the roofs or, uh, you know, and what proportion is at the at that highest peak?
Well, the definition for building height is the average grade to the peak of the dwelling. So that's what we did.
Yeah, to the peak, but I but we're trying to, if you're comparing your proposed property building to to the neighbor, to the neighboring properties and its character and and it and the character of the of the um of the structures there and 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 its impact on the properties in the back, you're saying is your heights have nothing to the your testimony about these heights are are pretty much irrelevant. Or or certainly are are in, you know, are apples and oranges. Now, what about, there are two build, the um the uh the two that are lower. Are those flat-roofed buildings?
No. Oh, wait, I have to, I have to confirm that. I have um a look at the picture right now. Uh. No, uh, the the building on lot three is a flat roof. Yes.
That's the that's a that's a commercial building, right?
That's, yes.
And 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 the other building is also, the other commercial building is also flat-roofed, right?
Um, no, it's it's there's a dwelling with um with uh two and a half stories and a uh a high peak on lot four.
That's that's you listed as the, that high peak is lower than the uh than the thirty-four feet?
That one, yes.
Okay, and then um uh. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Do any other members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do. We have Eric Buckley. Eric.
Hi, everyone. This is Eric Buckley, Edge Hill Court. Okay, my question is uh for that new um, the the new document that was submitted, the boundary and top uh topographic survey. Um, so it looks like, yes, the roof peak is shown at two twenty-one point seven, but that's for the existing building, correct?
That's correct.
So you're adding another, what, fifteen to twenty feet on top of that? So now your average uh roof peak would be roughly fifteen feet higher than all the rest of the buildings in this surrounding area, correct?
We're adding nine point uh two feet, nine point four feet to it, so the proposed elevation will be at two thirty-one point one.
Is that measured to the roof or to the parapet?
Um, that's for the architectural plans where uh I believe he has the top of the parapet, but I'm I'm not a hundred percent certain. I don't have those plans in front of me.
Okay, yeah, so the that the point being, it from what I'm seeing, the that building will be roughly ten feet above, in terms of sea level, above the the the, uh, yeah, of of the uh adjacent properties, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so you and also I wanted to um ask a question related to what Stan asked, and that was uh a question on whether a variance was being requested for a rear setback. Um, because the question is valid, if you're adding a story to this building, so wouldn't the extra story be required to adhere to that setback?
That's a legal requirement, and that is not how the law is interpreted. The the law says that you look at the building footprint, not the addition upwards. Um, that was addressed in uh Mr. McDonough's planning testimony, that a variance is not requ- I mean, we are requesting a variance uh but only to the existing nonconformity.
So, okay, so you're what you're stating is that pretty much you're taking an existing nonconformity and making it worse by adding a story and not conforming again to the setback requirements, correct?
No, we're not making it worse. We're making it exactly the same. It's still going to be the same offset.
You're adding a story and you're not adhering to the setback requirement, so that's making it worse, correct?
Uh, that's your opinion, Mr. Buckley. Uh, Ms. Bullock, if you have a response, you may respond, but that's not how the law interprets it.
Okay.
Um, I I agree with you. Um, to answer his question, I I think you've already answered it for me.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Do any other members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Anne. State your name and address again.
Hi there. Thank you so much. Anne Hirsch, twelve Edge Hill Road. Um, yeah, uh, forgive me and Ms. Bullock, thank you for your you know, your thoughts and and the work you did, but I'm not an engineer, so forgive the way I'm going to ask this question. If I see a six-foot-seven man coming toward me um from a block away, I am less concerned than if he is standing toe-to-toe with me. At that point, I will be shrieking. Here I am shrieking. Here are my neighbors shrieking. This I I don't want to say monstrosity because that's, you know, uh, uh, maybe invalid, um, but this is encroaching on our lives in a way that the letter of the law, which you are describing, is not um indicating that it is being a a concern. I understand the footprint might be the same, but the fact that it is so close to us makes that extra story um which you you say all of the, uh, uh, I'm correct in in saying and repeating what you said that all of the other buildings were where they were properly should be um closer to the road. The only thing that this variance has um uh uh as a threat to us is the height and closeness. Can you see that the closeness does make a difference to people living around this building?
Well, based on what you just said, the the buildings in these lots, it's not required that they be adjacent to the front property lines. They just have to be within the upland buildable areas, so these houses could have been set back much further if the developer desired. So that that's not
This is Maurice Cox. I just wanted to answer this because we keep having the same questions. So all those houses on Main Street was built in the nineteen thirty-four's or around that time, right? This is pre-car. So when this building on one seventy-two Main Street was constructed, it was constructed because cars were available. And that's why the setback was there, so now it met that requirement. If it was to build forward, we'd be having a whole different conversation. Would we be wanting parking variance and everything of that nature? I mean, things change over a period of time. In a few years, it will change. But in two thousand and nineteen, West Orange Board created an ordinance to allow us to go up and also make this a multifamily mixed-use property, which we are doing by law. So we keep going back and
I'm sorry, Mr. Cox. I I I see I have less than thirty seconds. I just want to thank you. So I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Cox, that maybe um the way to handle this is for the building to be put front again, where we won't have a problem with the extra story. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Do any other members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock on her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Jonathan Barton.
Hi.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Sure, yes, go right ahead, sir.
For having me again, Jonathan Barton, ten Edge Hill. Um, and I just wanted to speak to um uh Mrs. Bullock. Um, so of of the properties that you mentioned, um, which is the the property that uh where the building is closest to the property line?
Um, that would be a northerly property, lot three. The uh, the
What's the
Can can I, can I share a picture?
Uh, I don't know.
If, Megan?
Yes, go ahead.
If we could pause my time while we do that, it would be cool.
Well, I can't see it, but can you guys?
I can see it. The yellow building, and then there's the um, the pizza.
Yeah, I just don't know how to make mine show. Is it still there?
Yep, if you want to describe it, we can see it.
What are you trying to point out?
So, okay, so this picture is the north side of our property. So those are the three dwellings that are lot five, lot six, uh lot four and lot three. Lot three is the commercial building that has the flat roof. So uh you can then see uh lot four and lot five. So if I go to our surveyor's shot. How do I make it change? Oh, I can do it over here. So then now, these these three dwellings are on the south side of our property. Uh, closest to our property is um is lot ten. And then adjacent to that, it that is lot um twelve and then lot fourteen. So now you can look at the structures that we located, where we got the uh adjacent grade. We got a finished floor. We got a shot out by the street, and we got the peak. So this is just simply showing so, you know, everyone can see what building uh buildings we're talking about. So
That's that's not the building that we were just discussing, right? We were
That's why I'm putting up the photos because I don't want to be uh, I don't want to be misleading and I want to be accurate.
That's fair.
You can air answer, if you can ask that question.
Uh, sure. The building, like the 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 property that is closest to the building, which property is that and what is the height of that that property? It's residential, correct?
Are you talking about this building right here?
Oh, I'm asking you which is which, okay, so there's a building that you guys want to propose to put, you know, another I can see it way there, setback on the on the on the left. There's your building. Um, what what property is closest, like what property line is closest to that building out of all of these properties?
Are you talking about the rear of the buildings now?
Sure. What I'm, I mean, just, it doesn't matter which side. I'm saying that the building exists there. There's a property, there it has adjacent properties. Which property that's not the property of that building is closest to that building?
We don't have a survey of the
Okay, I'll just answer the question. It's it's
We don't know.
Property.
It's which one?
It's ten Edge Hill.
Which is what lot?
I mean, I I'm not a surveyor. Uh, you do you know wh- which lot is the one that's directly behind it, whatever number that is?
Um, directly behind our property?
Yep.
That's not one of the uh three houses I'm showing. These three houses front
No, I'm not talking about the three houses, but you mentioned six, right?
Three houses on the north and three houses on the south.
Okay, so are you saying that of the 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 properties that you got the height for in the this grouping, that the property that's closest to the building is is not included in those heights?
We did not get a rear uh assessment.
Okay, so we don't know, you you don't know the height of the of the the property that's closest to the building?
Um, lots, lots five and lots ten are are close to our property.
Right, not the closest, but I I understand. I think I've kind of illustrated my point here. It's like I I feel like there's a little bit of of cherry picking here, so that's why I'm trying to pin down here, but there doesn't seem to be like the full breadth of data. Um, you know, because I can just tell you, I live in the property, and I I think that um, you know, I I'm not going to start to pontificate because I know I'll get cut off, but you know, uh, what what my my neighbors are mentioning and and questioning here is is valid, and uh we we keep talking about, I I'm wondering about this this whole thing where we keep like kind of dancing around the the question of like what uh needs to be allowed as a variance, and I'm really trying to understand how every single time that comes up, Mr. Cox uh tried to address it, which I didn't quite understand, but uh you know, the building is going up in height. We keep talking about the heights, and then we're talking about the setbacks, but the setback that needs a variance doesn't need a variance, even though it's going up. It's like, I I wish someone could really explain it to me. I I I think I've kind of like run on run on a little bit here, so I'm going to get off.
Do you have a question before your time runs out?
Uh, why wasn't the property that's closest to this building included in the height study?
Um, because at some point during all these hearings and uh testimonies, um, it was requested, I I not sure by who, but uh it was requested that we get the adjacent building heights. And for us to do that, um, it's it's very easy to to do that off of off of a public right of way.
My very last question is, if I had a question about landscaping, who would that be to?
Um, that would be to me.
Okay, and I did lose a little bit of time as we were going around looking for stuff. If I could just have, you know
One last question for landscaping. Go right ahead, sir.
Uh, I I know that there was a uh, I I forget what we were calling it, like a dependency, a requirement, like uh when the board suggests uh something needs to be included. I'm so sorry. I can't I can't remember what that's called. Um, but in the last meeting, uh, we discussed the fact that it was a budding ten Edge Hill, and it was under ten feet, and it was suggested that uh the uh the applicant, in the in the case that, you know, even uh though we're we're fighting it, if it were to be approved, that they would be uh required to uh offer landscaping to the properties that were abutting it. Um, I did note that uh that the the lawyer for the applicant's side, which I forgot your name, I apologize, um, is that that couldn't be required by the town. Um, is that that couldn't be required by the town? And I just want to understand because it was put in there as a precondition. And I I I guess I wanted to understand uh what your understanding was of that because it was put in as a precondition.
If I was going to get here. I'll 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 tell you what. Um, it's not a precondition, you can't require it, but I will plant some trees in the back for you, I think. Um, but the maintenance aspect of it, watering it and making sure it grows is on you, okay? And I believe um the chairman have stated that as well and uh.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Cox, my question wasn't to you. Um, my question is uh if if this is enforceable or not.
Mr. Barton, so A, it's not enforceable, B, we we can condition it. But the applicant through his own goodwill has offered that to the neighbors directly behind this property. So that will be something the applicant come and meet you or whoever the neighbor is behind.
Yeah, I've met Mr. Cox. Uh, they I guess their only question is like, so that i- if that doesn't happen, they're like there's there's that's was my only question. It's like, that's the assumption that the applicant would then do that. There is no requirement.
The applicant has a good history in town and he is uh he has upgraded other properties in town and we have no reason to believe that he would go back on this word.
It's fine. I'm not uh casting aspersions. I don't know the applicant personally. I just wanted to know if there was a requirement.
No, sir. But thank you very much for the question. Do any other members of the public have any questions from Ms. Bullock about her testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any public comments about this application? I'm sorry, Mrs. Zebrow, do you want to sum up?
No, no, he would do that after public comment, I think.
Yes, I'll do it after public comment.
Okay, you got it.
It'll be very quick, I promise.
Good. Uh, do any member of the public have any comment about this application? You have two minutes to speak.
I lost my screen for one second. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't understand. Zoom is being really strange tonight. Um, okay, I'm ready. Are there any hands?
Please raise your hand and be identified.
Um, that's what's going on. Okay, so I have Jonathan Barton again.
Go right ahead. Two minute clock.
Hi, um. It's Jonathan Barton again, uh, ten Edge Hill. Um, you know, this is public comment. Essentially, I can address and say whatever, you know.
Yes, sir.
What I want to say, I I went out of my way to invite uh Mr. Cox to the property. Nobody reached out um to me. Um, eventually uh I was visited. I had a long extended conversation expressing my concerns with Mr. Cox and my experience was not uh what was stated. Um, I would have had my fears allayed with that. That was the point of the meeting because I wanted to find some sort of amicable, amicable, you know, uh, resolution. Um, it was expressed in no uncertain terms that anything that had to do with my property in terms of landscaping, in terms of trees was absolutely not anybody else's responsibility. And it was personally upsetting to me the way that that interaction went. I'm only saying this on the public comment because that was my exact experience. Um, and I I'm not coming into this with any sort of assumptions about character. Um, and and I I'm not trying to cast aspersions. I s- I went in with good faith to have this meeting. And uh I was re- like repeatedly rejected at any sort of concern. And I felt personally, and this is the only reason that this has been such a push is because I felt that the applicant, at least in that experience with me, um, did not seem to have any sort of concern for my concerns. And so um that I I felt the need to express that. Um, I hope it's appropriate to do so. Um, and and I just wanted to say that before we we close this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. So again, the planning board cannot condition it, but it takes thirty days to memorialize an application. And we hope that during that thirty days, you can come back at the next meeting and say that you and the applicant have made peace. He's heard your concerns, you've heard his his concerns and offerings, and you'll come back and say everything's happy. But we cannot condition that as a matter of law. Do any other members of the public have any public comment? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Ann.
Thank you so much, Ann Hirsch, twelve Edge Hill. Thank you, everyone here and for your time and efforts and everything. Um, I want to just comment that the thing that because of the letter of the law that everyone here keeps mentioning, and I'm going to say the murky letter of the law, because there was sort of some murky thing in nineteen seventy seven pushing this, regardless of cars, which were around way before nineteen seventy seven. Um, the i- it's 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 uh I's I not understanding why the thought of the variance of lifting one whole story above our heads is not important. It's not important that it is close. The closeness, the proximity is key. It's the only thing, in my opinion, we should be talking about. Without the closeness, you want to raise a building um a a story? Please, I beg, you put it nearer the main street and then raise it a story. I love that my um my neighbors uh on Main Street who have spoken and rightfully want a thriving Main Street. We are all for that. Um, they, I'm I'm not speaking for them. I'm guessing they might be equally as happy if the building work closer to Main Street and and lifted that story. I don't think it should be literally in my neighbor's backyard that somebody gets to do this. Um, when maybe the gracious way to to see this building is, you know what? I'm lucky. I get to have this. I I get to have it so close to where it shouldn't be. Um, thank, I I know I'm not articulate, but you feel the passion and I'm not the only one. And 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 we who are not for this plan are, not all of us can be here. It's sort of like a war of attrition. We can't keep coming every um month to this. So you'll see fewer of us, but just as passionate. And that's why I am maybe inarticulate, but totally um passionate about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any public comment? You have two minutes. Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Stan Shapiro.
Yes, hi, uh, Stan Shapiro here. So I I want to speak, I I'm going to speak quickly, I hope. But uh, we we didn't discuss it all uh tonight, but we had it the last meeting that that there is a problem of the density, that this doesn't comport with the um with the zoning requirements. It's adding an extra three residential units. And and somehow you're, you know, there's like a hidden bald game. It's trying to suggest that that because it's a mixed use, it doesn't have to comply with the density requirements of of either a commercial use or uh uh, you know, or residential or the current zoning. It makes no sense at all. It's an irrational interpretation. I understand that right, this board doesn't even have the uh uh authority to grant it a a a variance as the density. So how can you approve a building that has seven, that wants to add seven residential units in a four residential unit zone by calling it a high uh a mixed use? So it has seven plus the commercial space? It it doesn't make any, it's not a, it's not a rational interpretation of the zone. So ba- by by that reason alone, this this application should be and must be uh uh re- denied. And in fact, if you don't do it, you're just asking for a lawsuit in court down the road. Uh, so so let me go back. This this, the the actual plan here to build this box and move it up a a foot and have it encroached uh it way in the back off the street, not not uh not in relationship to any of the surrounding properties. And not is is an undeserving variance as to the encroachment in the back. It's an undeserving variance as to the height and it's an undeserving variance as to the density. We have this little ga- the gaming of the system tonight by by trying to uh uh to to cha- evade the the health and safety requirements for uh um, you know, to to sub- say the stat, it is only, we're going to make it only, we're going to put it on hold. We're going to only do two thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet instead. So so we don't, so we gain, so we don't have to do health and safety of having an elevator. That's not who deserves it a variance. We they're cutting cor- uh corners, they're going to put up seven unit, seven residential units, and they don't care about health and safety because they can, they're going to monkey with the with the with the measurements to make it not have to have an elevator. This board should be representing the public. This building is out of character to the to the to the surrounding buildings and the community and the neighborhood. And it encroaches on the on the properties in the back. Um, I I have more to say, but I'm going to stop. And I hope you reject it.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Do any of the members of the public have any que- any comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have two minutes.
Yes, we have Eric Buckley. Go ahead, Eric.
Hi, everyone. This is Eric Buckley at eight Edge Hill Court. And um, yeah, I just wanted to state, obviously, I'm a a resident that a uh that butts this property in the in the back here. Um, and I just wanted to bring to, you know, ask, kind of ask uh a question that the doesn't really need an answer. But um, what does the town gain with this uh with this building getting an additional story outside of a facelift of a lot and, you know, minimally of a building? Um, and ultimately, I'm I I guess is, you know, this building can exist as two stories with three residential units. And what do those extra four units do for the town? Um, it doesn't add anything even for affordable, for the affordable units. It's one for this whole building. So I'm I'm a little confused what the benefit of the town is. It seems like um there's a lot of a lot of statements saying like, oh, we're we're, you know, requesting this variance because we're making this such a a better building. And in my opinion, it's not. It's actually making the context of the main street pretty pretty terrible. Um, so I guess that's uh something I I would like the board to consider is what do what does this extra story do for 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 the town as a whole? How does it benefit the residents? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any public comment about this application? You have two minutes to speak. Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Eric. Can I just hear from him?
Hi, yes, yes, Eric. Um, initially, I was trying to comment and I I had to wait till the end. However, um, I think I'm gonna kind of second what Chairman was saying in in regards to how, you know, Mr. Cox does have a history of having, you know, different buildings in uh West Orange. And, you know, I think that history does matter and based on all his buildings, I don't see that. I don't, he hasn't had no issues um in terms of any kind of safety or uh any, you know, regulations that he didn't follow for the building to be safe. So I think, you know, the board should take that into consideration. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do any of the members of the public have any public comment about this application? You have two minutes to speak. Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Christine Prasad.
Hi, my name is Christine Prasad and I own the medical practice Truell, I at one oh five Main Street. Um, and it would be my practice moving into the first floor. What I do have to say is, one of the reasons why my practice is in West Orange is because we serve a lot of the West Orange community as far as patients. We serve a lot of the high school athletes as far as like sports medicine wise. So I'm hopeful this will get approved because, you know, we are committed to the West Orange community, whether that's public events, seeing patients, so I'm hopeful for that. In addition to that, passing by the um current building, it's it is an eyesore. So I think an upgrade is needed, so I'm hopeful that you guys would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any public comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have two minutes to speak.
Yes, we have Sophie.
Good evening, Sophie Lubin, eight Edge Hill Court. Um, to Christina's point, I think it's great that you're serving local athletes and people in need of medical services. Um, that can all be done from one story, so just want to quickly make that point. My second point is, I have been a resident of West Orange for a little under three years. And I have to say, it's really disheartening to see the lack of regard for the local neighbors in A, not even contacting them to take a look at their property that this proposition so um meaningfully impacts. It's disheartening that our that that property was not considered when looking at the building heights, that it was omitted as um Jonathan Barton pointed out. Um, and it's disheartening that the shadow that this building is going to cast is not at all a consideration when during this last meeting. I believe it was the mayor that brought up wanting to see the impact um of the shadow on the property by raising that uh by raising it another story. Um, all of these things are now being minimized and it makes me really honestly question my investment in this town. It makes me really sad to hear that our voices and our um financial investments are being minimized in such a way. And our concerns are being minimized in such a way. And there's really just a lot of dancing around of uh, you know, the property that is closest to one seventy two, one seventy four Main Street. Um, so it it saddens me and I just I just want to call out that there's just a lot of dancing around going on here. And these are things that absolutely should be considered. Um, and I was looking forward to seeing them during this meeting and they weren't considered. Um, and just continue to be minimized. Thank you for your time.
Hi, it's Maurice Cox here. Um, just wanted to speak on the application. Thank you, everybody, for your participation on this. And I do hear the residents, um, all the residents and their concern. So I grew up in West Orange. I've been in West Orange since I was thirteen years old. I have done quite a bit of investments in West Orange. I drove up and down Main Street multiple occasions. And you know what I've seen in Main Street? Nothing has changed. So I personally am coming here to help West Orange change Main Street. Unfortunately, Main Street had, West Orange has had its fight against development, changing the Main Street and watching every other community around it overdevelop and becoming very functional while we have been stuck for quite some time. The only development that has been done was Edisonoff, and that took over ten years, right? Um, I remember when that whole process was because my gym was actually in that building, Coliseum Gym. And that building itself is immediately right in front of our building, much higher than our building and is a multifamily building itself, right? Um, what we are looking for for Main Street to happen, right? And especially me is I'm going to be very bullish on Main Street. I am going to put my money where Main Street, where my mouth is. And I'm going to buy everything that is available on Main Street and help Main Street change. Have pretty much the ratables it need, had the housing it needs. If I could give them, you know, more affordable housing, that's what I'm planning on doing, right? Unfortunately, this culture of stopping development in West Orange, I'm not with it. I do not like it. We're coming here and we're going to fight the good battle of making West Orange modern and made. We're not going to be happy with nineteen nineteen homes. If they're historical and they serve a purpose, yes. But we're going to do everything we could to ensure that West Orange go in the right direction that is comparable to other places where has local shops, you know, local business, local everything. I don't want to drive up up and down Main Street again and see all the Main Street empty or everything selling, right? Um, that's not how Main Street should be. I support West Orange and moving forward with Main Street, moving forward development and bringing Main Street to the modern era, which is twenty twenty five and further.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public have any public comment about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified. You have two minutes to speak.
Not seeing any. I don't, oh, no.
Thank you very much. We'll close this portion of the meeting.
Wait, hang on, Chairman.
Okay.
It's everybody that already spoke, maybe Lenny Carr didn't have a, I don't know which one to do.
Uh, no, we we've we've heard everybody and uh just repeating it is not going to make it better.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Um. Okay, uh, you want to sum up, Mr. Zebrow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to be clear, we're here seeking uh flexible C variance relief uh for three uh different things. The rear yard setback where thirty foot is required, six point eight feet is provided. That's an existing nonconformity lot coverage where seventy five percent is permitted and eighty seven point two percent is provided. That's another non uh existing nonconformity and the number of stories that are permitted. Uh, we're two and a half are permitted and we're proposing three. Uh, you heard from our um representative of the property owner, Mr. Cox, our engineer, Donna Bullock, our architect, Jason Peist, and our planner, um, John McDonough, and also our traffic engineer, uh, Patrick. And uh, Mr. McDonough kind of summed it up. Uh, the, when we're looking for C variance relief, we have to show that the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments. Uh, and in this case, the application as a whole advances purpose A, G, I, and M of the municipal land use law. And uh, Mr. uh McDonough testified that there were no detriments. Uh, while we did not provide a shadow study, that's not something that's required. It's nowhere in the township ordinance, uh, and we've heard no um testimony from anyone that's qualified to present such testimony as to the impact of shadows on this property. Uh, for those reasons, we believe that we we've satisfied the board uh to grant C variance relief. And there was one comment in connection with the density and uh that comment should be disregarded. And there was one comment in connection with the density and, uh, that comment should be disregarded as that was discussed. And Mr. Um, and the, uh, town planner put his, his opinion on the record that a density variance was not required. So this board does have jurisdiction. So we've just requested this application be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have one matter of administration to do first before we move on. Uh, I would like to ask the board, uh, if they agree with me, I would like to, uh, refer, ask the zoning official to refer the cafe ordinance to the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Committee to report back to the board on their thoughts on that, uh, ordinance.
Chairman, I wanted to wear the Downtown Alliance.
And add the Downtown Alliance.
Yes, board to review that. Thank you.
Okay, so the Ms. McGovern will be the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Committee, and the Downtown Alliance to review the ordinance and comment back to the planning board, uh, with, uh, prior to the next, the meeting where we're going to hear this.
Okay.
Received, Chairman.
I'm sorry, who?
Received the information.
Ms. Gary Adams, could you say that again?
All right, so it, the ordinance that will, that the board will review, hopefully by the next meeting, which is July 16th. We will make sure it gets to the Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development, what is it, committee?
Yeah, and the Downtown Alliance.
And the Downtown Alliance. And we'll ask them to make any comments that they have with respect to that in a report? Or you want them to show up and speak?
In a report, in a, in a short report. They can show up too, but in a report.
All right.
Okay, um.
Chairman, excuse me.
Excuse me, who?
Uh, I was.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes, thank you. With the outdoor cafe, I wanted the, uh, the council did approve on first reading a version. There is a state version and also our health director has also submitted amendments as well. I'm hoping that the boards will review all, all of the amendments and suggestions.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, um, okay. Do any members of the board have any questions or comments? And first of all, Ms. McGovern, would you read any, over any, uh, conditions that we've discussed first?
Sure. The conditions are, well, we have the usual. I'm just going to skip to the specific ones for here. Um, all right, applicant agrees to abide by all the suggestions and directives set forth in the matrix reports, um, with the exception of the parking, which has been satisfied and, um, the lighting, which was discussed. Um, applicant will abide by the township tree ordinance. A white roof will be constructed. HVAC units on the roof of the building will be moved and consolidated at the front of the building so as to provide consideration to the neighbors behind the building. Applicant shall install and maintain a sound insulation partition while to muffle the sound of the HVAC system on the roof. No portion of the building may be used as an event space. Applicant agrees to fully comply with the noise ordinance. Applicant will mill replace and re-stripe the entire parking lot. The proposed lighting will not have any spillage onto neighboring properties. Applicant agrees to clean out and confirm to the satisfaction of the township engineer that the existing stormwater system is functioning as intended. There shall be no exterior lights on the rear of the building. All debris on site will be cleaned up and the site will be properly maintained, free from debris in perpetuity. The parking spaces will consist of one ADA space, two EV spaces, 20 standard spaces, so that the one space in the front will be removed to allow for better turning into and out of the site. Um, applicant will install and maintain car bumper stops to keep vehicles from overhanging onto the walkway. Applicant will regrade the slope for the ADA parking space and will submit plans showing that the regreting, that regrading to the township engineer for approval. Trench drain grades will be repaired or replaced to make sure that they lay flat. Applicant must replace the current wooden fence and replace the fence with a concrete or block wall. Applicant will install a fence or some other control to prevent neighbors from parking in the parking lot. Applicant must supply the lighting fixture table. Applicant must supply the sewer calculations to the township engineer to demonstrate if there is sufficient sewer capacity and shall submit plans that show the connection point and that the lateral can handle the sewer connection and any other calculations to satisfy 2.17 of the matrix April 1, 2025 addendum report. Applicant must change the sewer pipes from eight inches to 12 inches. Applicant shall submit the grading plan for the driveway apron. The fire subcode official shall evaluate the parking lot for fire lane markings and applicant shall abide by the direction of the fire code official regarding that necessary striping. Applicant shall submit a full-size sheet demonstrating the site triangle. One unit shall be designated as affordable housing unit and applicant must designate and identify the specific unit with a description as to the size of the unit and the number of bedrooms to be filed in the form of deed, which shall be approved by the township attorney and the planning board attorney and shall be filed with the registrar of Essex County. Medical office use is limited to unit one on the first floor, 14, 1,436 square feet, and there shall be no medical use in the second commercial space, 1,388 square feet. Applicant shall submit a shared parking plan for the medical office use and residential use. Applicant will install and maintain privacy film on the rear third floor windows. The building department and fire code subcode officials shall review the need for an elevator and an additional means of egress. And if either a required applicant must return to the board regarding changes to the plan resulting from the addition of an elevator and/or additional means of egress. Applicant must make reasonable efforts to work with the rear neighbors for one-time installation of trees and/or landscaping on the neighbor's property. Should application reach an agreement with the neighbor to install landscaping, it shall be the responsibility of the neighbor going forward to maintain the landscaping. No parking spaces may be leased to others, including trucks. Parking must be limited to patients, customers, residents, and their guests of the building. And applicant will work with the township engineer to block access to the area behind the building from the fire escape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what we'll do is we will have a motion to approve or a motion to disapprove, and they'll discuss that. Does anybody make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to our board, uh, and with the following affirmation, affirmation, conditions as my board attorney, that the planning board approved PB 24-24, 172, 174 Main Street, LSC Block 83 Lot 1 and 501 ZM B1, 172, 174 Main Street. I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, to the board.
With, with conditions and for a, the C variances for pre-existing non-conforming conditions, as stated previously. Do I have a second on a motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Cardoza, I'm sorry, Mr. Cardoza. It's late. Mr. Cardoza's second is the motion. Yamalet on the motion. I'm sorry, do we have any discussion on the motion? Do any members of the board have anything to say about the motion before we move on?
I'm, I'm just.
Mr. Alper.
Here, I defer to the mayor, Mayor McCartney. Go ahead.
Mayor McCartney.
Well, I wanted to just say that I understand the applicant is dealing with pre-existing conditions, uh, which we heard, um, through the residents adjacent to the property. I understand how difficult that was or is. Uh, I do hope that in good faith, as the applicant, uh, or Mr. Cox stated, that he would work with the property owner. I'm hoping that, uh, that is in fact, and will be true. Uh, and that whatever previous engagement that you had, um, it, that an amicable, amicable resolution can be found, I'm hoping. I wanted to say that I did appreciate Ms. Bullock showing the properties from the north and the south, that even with the additional, uh, story, we are still under the height, uh, requirement at 34 feet. Um, and the other buildings, though, maybe not, again, with the pre-existing condition, they are farther away from the properties, um, still would have, would still create shadows. Um, I appreciate the investment and the improvements on Main Street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alper.
Yeah, thanks. Um, you know, I, I, I think one of the harder things that we do is, you know, weighing the benefits and detriments in a C variant situation. And it's, it's, you know, I think there's clear benefits to the community from a Main Street, especially property improvement, to the extent that this will be an improvement. That said, it would have been, I think, more helpful to have not necessarily a full shadow study, but some sort of data along the lines of, you know, right now at worst, the worst shadows are X feet into the closest property for Y hours at the wor, on the worst day of the year. And it looks mathematically like it's going to be Z feet for Y hours. Some sort of data would, would have been more helpful, I think. You know, instead we're having to go off more of a, uh, a, a gut sense of where things are. So, you know, that frustration noted. I, I do think that there are real benefits to downtown here.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the board have any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. Yeah, I, I am sorry, the concerns of the residents have been minimized. And as no shadow study was completed to determine the effect on the neighbors only 10 feet away, their valid concern as to the impact and the impairment of the value of their homes is a real concern, and I can't support this.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Yamalet on the motion.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
No.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Weryno?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
You know, this is, as Councilperson Scarpah said, this is a very difficult thing. However, uh, everybody's backyard is somebody else's front yard. We, as a township, either look at the master plan and look at the neighbors and say, how can we make it better? So you have a building that is pre-existing non-conforming and pretty much not working. The master plan talks about Main Street. And it also talks about the historic district of Llewellyn Park. And there has to be a blend of what we could do for Main Street and take a building that's, uh, not working and make it working again. Uh, it was basically used as a parking lot. Many years ago is a fully functional building with all offices rented. It's not. Uh, the building height is going up nine point something feet, which is a half a story. And it is consistent with the buildings to the north and the south of it. Uh, if you look at the building to the south of it, there is three stories in that building. It comes out at two and a half stories, but you see there's windows and it looks like somebody's living in the third story. So is it exactly what we're seeing here? It's not a flat roof, it's a pitched roof? So again, we have to weigh all the things. The applicant, on the other hand, has, I think, at least 15 conditions to make that building better and make the site from that neighbor behind in Llewellyn Park a much better project. So the, uh, we took into consideration the, uh, neighbors' issues and have the windows blocked out in the back. It is going to be an upgrade to the property, an upgrade to the property for the town. Uh, it's going to put a building that is not working into working, uh, usage again. Where we are consistent with the master plan. And for those reasons, uh, the balance that we have struck as a planning board, I hope the neighbors understand, uh, we're doing the best we can based on the law and the ordinances, and I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, and I want to thank the neighbors of all sides for all the information, the time that you've extended providing, uh, the information to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, uh, members of the board.
Thank you. Um, the next special meeting of the planning board is July 16th at 6:30, uh, in Town Hall, uh, live. The next special meeting after that is July 23rd in Town Hall at 6:30 PM live. The next special meeting after that is July 30th at 6:30 PM in Town Hall live. And the next regular meeting is August, is it August 2nd? August 6th, August 6th at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Cardoza, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes are above the nose. Thank you very much. Have a safe and happy July 4th.
Happy 4th.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Happy 4th, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Happy 4th.
Bye-bye.